All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order for Tuesday, April eighth, times five thirty-four. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mayor Robert Parkehurst.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe.
Present.
Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Kelly Krebs.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. And it was also pointed out to me that we now have seven mayors currently in the room tonight. So, Mayor Pro Tem Lowe, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and inspiration?
Absolutely. Please rise if you can. Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. With the Westeria Festival happening this Saturday and also with it being National Library Week, I just wanted to speak a little bit about our history of Sierra Madre and how basically our town is built on volunteerism as we know in community events and community. And with that, there's a lot of crossover. With so many mayors and former mayors being in here, I'm looking at all of the different jobs and volunteer work that all of us do in this community and how it takes a village. So, our wonderful city in nineteen, in eighteen eighty-one, Nathaniel Carter purchased the original eleven hundred and three acres that compromise our, that compose our city. And it was interesting, he bought it from Lucky Baldwin's, who my great-great-grandfather was his herb doctor way back then. Our first schoolhouse was built in eighteen eighty-two near Kirsten Court. And then our Sierra Madre Public Library was incorporated under the State of California in eighteen eighty-six. The first library building was completed in eighteen eighty-seven. And then in eighteen eighty-seven, we had our first town hall constructed. And this really reminds me of what we still have. So, if any of you guys know Mike Comer and Tom Dennison, their office is used for all types of community events. It's where the Little League meets. It's where lots of community groups meet, as well as their, their work. And back in eighteen eighty-seven, our town hall was constructed. It was the original post office, the grocery store, the cigar factory, and the meeting place for a number of religious groups. In eighteen ninety-four, Mrs. Brugman purchased the now-famous Westeria vine for seventy-five cents, which is about nineteen dollars today. Mount Wilson Trail, we had our first race in nineteen oh eight, which is the second oldest race in, footrace in California. The oldest is in nineteen oh five in Marin County. In nineteen oh seven, we incorporated as a California city, Charles Worthington Jones, served as our first mayor. And then in nineteen fourteen, after a long legal battle, the city acquired the title to all the water rights. And if you guys don't know, our city's not a contract city. We have our own water department, fire department, police department, and all of our services. So, that's why I think that was important. In nineteen oh seven, Sierra Madre becomes incorporated as a California, I'm sorry, I repeated that. In nineteen seventeen, we joined our first entry in the passing of Tournament of Roses. Right before that, with all of these events that we used to have, I, my, my mother-in-law was showing me pictures of the old pioneer days. But in nineteen eleven, we had our first flower festival. It was sponsored by the Women's Club. And then we had our first Westeria Fete in nineteen twenties. In nineteen seventeen, I said we joined the Tournament of Roses on our first parade and our first float. Nineteen twenty-one, with the disastrous fire to the fire department, we had our first fireman, first fire department volunteer. And we had our first fireman's ball in nineteen twenty-five, and we had eighty-seven firemen's balls until my retirement. I think we should bring that back. Absolutely. One of the most fun Sierra Madre events. And then in April, I'm sorry, in, going back to the, the community, we had our, some heavy rains that came in nineteen twenty-six, similar to what we've just had. And the canyon pool filled with debris and damaged twenty homes. After that, in nineteen twenty-eight, we completed the canyon dam at a cost of sixty-eight thousand dollars. Then in July twenty-ninth, we opened our Sierra Madre Canyon Pool. And it was right across from where Mary's Market is. We closed that in nineteen fifty-seven. And then also in nineteen thirty-five, by the way, we completed our spreading, our spreading grounds and settling basin at a cost of seventy-one thousand. In March nineteen thirty-eight, we had another huge rain saturation, which caused some damage to the cabins in the San Anita Canyon. And in nineteen forty-nine, we had our first pioneer parade. We had the first aqua fair at the canyon pool in nineteen fifty-two. And then the new library was reconstructed in nineteen fifty-five, which we just are replacing right now. The art fair started in nineteen sixty-three, which is coming up in May, from the Friends of the Library. And one other very notable, exciting thing is that we are celebrating, at the centennial of the incorporation in two thousand seven, our Director of Libraries, Tony Buckner, and our other very benevolent citizen, Judy Webb Martin, they co-chaired an event for the All-American City Award, which we won. And that was in two thousand seven, like I said. So, with all the events that's been happening, Westeria Festival coming this weekend on Saturday, it's National Library Week, I just want to remind everyone of how important it is for all of us to volunteer and commune and take care of all these amazing events in our town, because we wouldn't be able to afford this amazing town and all the services we are accustomed to if we had to pay for every single thing. So, we appreciate all the volunteers, especially the ones that are here, our former mayors. In case you guys didn't know, we are not a paid city council. And so, I just want to appreciate everyone who's contributed to our town since the early nineteen hundreds.
Thank you so much. That was fantastic. All right. So, we'll continue on. Now, we have a approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes that anyone would like to make to the agenda? Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, hold on. We'll go on with a little bit more discussion. So, I have, I've had a request that we flip-flop the Alverno and the budget. So, public hearings one and two, I've had a request to reorder those. Any opposition to that?
No.
So, we're looking forward to keeping staff here for a while, huh?
Well, we're hoping to. There's been an over-under on ten o'clock.
Yeah.
So, all right, no objection. With that, then, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is reading, approval of reading resolutions in minutes by title only. I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting minutes, March twenty-fifth. Any edits from anybody on the, on the minutes?
I have one, one small change. In my council report, it stated that I attended the, the chamber board meeting, but I did not attend. I was updated by President Sumino. I did not actually attend.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt a meeting minutes as amended?
I move to adopt the meeting minutes as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mayor and City Council reports. Who would like to go first?
I can go first.
Yes.
So, I missed the last meeting, so I'm reaching back a little bit farther than most and probably repeating some items that were shared last time. But just quickly, was very happy to meet with Judy Chu and her staff for breakfast and talk a lot, and be able to update her. And the staff did an amazing job updating her on the various issues facing the city and the various status of our response to the fire and flood incidents. Was also very happy and excited to attend the opening of the new bookstore in town, Fables and Fancies. It's a lovely, lovely shop. I, I hope all the best for it, because I'm a bookstore lover for sure. And that is just a lovely, lovely shop. And, and she seems like a very, very nice set of owners. In fact, she used to be involved with the bookstore in Montrose, if you are familiar with that. So, that was good news, that she's coming with some nice business background. Also, attended the honors dinner. Some of you may have seen in the paper that I had an impromptu announcement at the, at the honors dinner, wanting to honor our exiting city manager. So, we did that a little bit on the fly. So, thank you for, you know, allowing me that opportunity. And then last week, I attended the Community Services Commission meeting. We got an update on the pickleball, the development of the pickleball courts in Sierra Vista Park, which is on track. And that's great that we're going out to bid for that. That, and then we also had discussions around fee waivers for the Westeria Festival and the Sierra Madre Elementary Annual Fund Event. And that concludes my report.
Great. Who would like to go next?
I've got a short one.
Okay.
Planning Commission meeting was canceled last Thursday, so I have no report.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I have a short report as well. April first, there was a finance enhancement ad hoc committee meeting that I attended with, with the mayor. There was the, the main body, as well as a lot of, I don't know, we call them adjuncts or...
Sure.
There were, there were quite a few members of the community there. So, this, this is a, a committee that's comprised of members of the community. To the, the first part is to look through our finances, our budget, our past annual audits or annual reports to see what we've been doing, to then come to a conclusion and provide recommendations. So, I was very impressed with the, A, the amount of people that were there, and B, the breadth of knowledge and expertise of, of the individuals that are part of this, this committee. So, I think some good works had come out of that. And I was, I was hoping to just sit there and listen and bring back updates, but I actually was very active. As you, as you know, when we're talking about finances, I tend to get like that. So, I'll be quiet for the, the budget update tonight. April third was the Senior Community Commission meeting. It was part two of the update from City Attorney Gergosian. He gave a wonderful update on the Sierra Vista Apartments on Esperanza. Part two had to do with the calculations of the rents. This is a low and very low housing development, which the city owns the property and there's a lease. So, we do have, we do have some interest in how they're charging the residents. There were quite a few residents from that building in attendance. And there was, was a lot of clapping. They were very impressed with what you found and what our, what our staff had found and what, what is, what is happening going forward with that, with that apartment. So, that, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem?
So, I also missed last meeting, but I don't have too much, because I was very busy for a short time and then went on vacation. So, on March twentieth, City Manager Reynoso and I attended a really interesting San Gabriel Valley Economic Forecast that was held, City of Industry. And it was interesting to hear that, of course, construction is not going to happen right away. They anticipate construction will happen in two thousand twenty-six, starting. Unfortunately, some of those impacts that we will see are fewer new businesses, less job growth, a permanent out migration, a decline in employment or wages, and a defaults increase in mortgages. Maybe not so much Sierra Madre, but in the other burn areas. We also, though, saw some interesting growth in Sierra Madre, particularly when it comes to real estate. We had a four-point-one percent increase in inflation in two twenty-three and in two twenty-four. We will see an increase in rents, as we anticipated. And there was some other interesting discussion on insurance, because Commissioner Lara was present. And we know, we've heard about the increases in insurance and the possibility of having a twenty-two percent increase in State Farm. And part of that discussion was, it has to be more competitive, and it has to be a catch-up, so that these insurance companies are having enough to, to compensate. But also, if we don't make it competitive enough, they will flee and they'll leave. And so, we did bring back certain insurance companies back to California that had fled. And so, that was a positive. And we're looking at those changes. And then that afternoon, the Kensington celebrated their tenth anniversary. It was amazing. The food spread alone was outstanding. It was really neat to see how many community members, from the inception of Kensington to current times, were all present. And if you, if you aren't familiar, Kensington is very benevolent as well with our city, and they really support a lot of what we do. So, that was it.
Thank you so much. All right. So, I will echo what Councilmember Garcia said on the Ad Hoc Revenue Enhancement Committee. Likewise, I was very impressed by the questions and the preparedness the committee members came forward. I mean, they were really ready for the meeting, had lots of really good thoughtful questions. And I also wanted to thank Councilmember Garcia for, for, this was his recommendation to come up with this committee. And I think it's off to a really good start. On April fifth, I was invited to join Los Angeles Mayor Karen Bass and other mayors from Los Angeles County to discuss upcoming sporting events in the L.A. area. Starting this year and going through two thousand twenty-eight, there will be more than nine national and international events coming to our area, including the FIFA World Cup next year, the NBA All-Star Game, Women's U.S. Open, the Super Bowl, and of course, the Olympics and Paralympics. These events are expected to bring more than twenty billion dollars in economic impact to the region and over two hundred thousand jobs. To put just the Olympics in perspective, it's equivalent to seven Super Bowls every day for sixteen consecutive days. So, what does that mean for Sierra Madre? And why, why were we there? Like, why was I there? Many of these events will have fan zones, community festivals, cultural Olympiad, and opportunities for local businesses. In fact, the Los Angeles Opera, believe it or not, is directly an outgrowth of the nineteen eighty-four Olympics. So, it's, it's going to give us a lot of opportunities. We could have, you know, we can, we can bring people to Sierra Madre. And with eight games from the World Cup happening at the Rose Bowl, there's an opportunity for those people to be coming here, to be in our downtown, to be at our businesses, to be part of our community. So, we're going to have an, an update tonight on some opportunities for the city. One of our presentations, I think it's something that'll be really interesting for us to consider and, and think about going forward. And then today, I just got back from Sacramento. Our Assembly Member, John Harabedian, had a bill that he was considering, that he, he introduced on the twentieth and had its first committee hearing today. And it is A B one zero two four. I asked him if that was, if that number was, what was chosen, and actually, we just lucked out. So, they don't have five-digit numbers, so, but a four-digit number that has our zip code is pretty impressive. This bill will, will bring, will create a plan for working with wildlife. It will create goals for the Department of Fish and Wildlife. It's, it's really exciting. And so, I came and, and gave testimony of the bear challenges here in the city. And so, I'm just going to give you a couple of the statistics that came out of it. Last year, we had three hundred and sixty-six calls for bear-related incidents, incidents. That's up from approximately twenty in two thousand one. We had thirty-four last month alone. So, that's a five-fold increase than we had from any year before, any period prior to April at, at all. And then last year, we had forty-one bear break-ins and twenty-seven attempts. So, this is, this bill will help bring resources and it'll help bring plans and things to the San Gabriel Valley. It is moved ahead, it was unanimously supported by all members of the natural, excuse me, the Wildlife and Natural Resources Committee, and it goes on to appropriations next. So, we hope to see that and help to, to bring some, some plans and, and resources to the region to, to deal with bears. So, from there, we'll go on to city announcements. We've got a lot related to the library, not surprisingly. World Central Kitchen continues to support those impacted by the Eaton Fire with fresh locally sourced produce. That is going to be in the Sierra Madre Library Parking Lot over at the corner of Lima and Sierra Madre Boulevard. And that's Wednesdays from four P.M. to eight P.M. and Fridays from eleven A.M. to three P.M. The library's annual bookmark contest ends this week. So, make sure to bring your completed bookmarks to the library by six P.M. this Thursday, April tenth. No late entries will be accepted. This year's theme is Love My Sierra Madre. And winning entries will showcase people, places, or things that illustrate what we love about Sierra Madre. Today is National Library Workers' Day. It's a day for library staff, users, administrators, and friends groups to recognize the valuable contributions made by library workers. And yes, and we will have more on that in a minute, but thank you, yes. And going on with the continued creativity of the library, they, they encourage you to stop by the library to take a shelfie. It's a photo booth to separate, celebrate National Library Week. I am sure there will be books in it as well. The library's also celebrating spring with a Spring into Art table set up at the library all week. This Saturday, as we said, was the Westeria Festival. And in addition to it, it is, we have an Earth Day celebration that will be in Memorial Park, starting at nine A.M. and, nope, ten A.M. Ten to two. How many booths do we have? They weren't in my notes, but I, I...
The Earth, Earth Day itself is tended to, the Westeria has different hours, longer hours. I think we're up to eleven or twelve booths, and we'll be in Memorial Park.
Excellent. Excellent. And some of them include, who do we have that, that's joining us this year?
We have a lot of people that have been here before. We have Athens Services, our own local water district, the Clean Power Alliance, West Coast Arborists. And then one of the, the most recent additions, which was really nice to see, was the Eaton Canyon Nature Center.
Oh, wonderful.
So, they're, they'll be joining us on Saturday, and it'll be really nice to see them.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you for adding to that. And then we have, coming up on April nineteenth, the Sierra Madre Fire Department Easter Egg Hunt at nine A.M. Event is for children ages one to nine. Definitely, you need to get there before nine A.M. And the event, you know, it ends as quickly as it starts. It is very, very quick. And just remember to keep that eye out for those golden eggs. So, that are all the announcements that I have for today. So, we will go on and we will go to items not, not on the agenda. We have our Public Participation Code of Conduct. It's on the back of the yellow cards that you have. So, if you want to speak, fill out a yellow card. And as you're bringing it down, take a glance at the back of it, so you know what our, our Code of Conduct is. And with that, Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards?
We do, Mr. Mayor. In addition to the comment cards that we received this evening, the City Clerk's Office received two emails for items not on the agenda, and both those were forwarded to the City Council. This evening, we have three speaker cards submitted as of now for items not on the agenda. The first of the three is from Lauren Hill.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lauren Hill. I am part of the United States Small Business Administration. And so, you may have seen us here before, but we are intentionally in your area, trying to share information about the resources we have for those impacted by the Eaton Fire. So, we do have, I know you think of the Small Business Administration, you think of business loans, but we do also have loans for homeowners and renters to help rebuild and repair any physical damage that you've experienced. Renters can qualify for up to a hundred thousand dollars to replace any personal property. And homeowners can qualify for up to five hundred thousand dollars to rebuild, repair your actual home. We also have what's called mitigation loans. And those, we offer, we will provide twenty percent of your loan amount in addition to help you with any, preparing your home for any future disasters, God forbid. So, if that is, you know, putting fireproof roofs, fireproof windows on your structures, so that you can be better prepared in the future, should something happen. We also do provide business loans. So, for any physical damage your business may have experienced, those loans can be up to two million dollars. And in addition to that, we do provide economic injury disaster loans. So, those are not about your physical structure necessarily, but businesses in the area may have suffered due to the state of the community at this time. So, we do keep that in mind. And we provide loans for businesses to help with any revenue lost in this timeframe. So, the deadline for those economic injury loans is October eighth, because sometimes it takes longer to determine what the actual loss is. And the deadline for those physical damage loans has just been extended to the thirtieth of May. So, there is still some time, if anyone in your community is thinking about potentially reaching out to us for that type of resource. I did come with some flyers in my business card that I can share with you all later on. And our loans also have no payment and no interest for the first twelve months. So, that also gives people a little bit of time to get back on their feet after everything that has happened in the area. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a couple of questions? I know we normally don't during public comment, but I think this is important.
Yes.
So, first of all, maybe you don't know the answer, but if, if, if a resident wants to, again, the residents can get SBA loans, which is fantastic.
Yes.
If a resident does this, this is, do you know if this affects their insurance claim at all, the amount they can receive?
So, it doesn't affect, it doesn't, it doesn't impact your insurance claim at all. SBA also can provide a loan for you before your insurance has closed completely. So, if you do put in an insurance, insurance claim and you get that later, you can use the SBA loans to potentially pay it off. So, it won't affect what you're able to claim.
And, and secondly, are these, is the interest on this loan, when it starts, is it lower than the, the market?
Yeah. So, they are low-interest fixed-rate loans. So, for businesses, our interest, interest rates start at four percent. And for homeowners and renters, our interest rate starts at two-point-five percent.
That's phenomenal.
And we also offer them for nonprofits. And the interest rate for that is three, starts at three-point-six percent.
And then my final question is, are you still on Woodbury, just east of Lincoln?
We are.
And you'll be there for how much longer?
So, I'm going to say until our deadline currently right now, and that's May thirtieth. So, we have our customer service team, and they're there and available to answer questions. We also have SBA.gov/disaster. And you can go on there and learn more information and also reach out to us there.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. I'm, I'm thrilled that you're here.
Yeah, you're very welcome. And I can leave on the table the flyers and cards that we have, if that's okay.
So, I, I'll follow up with, with two quick questions. One, if you could give, would you be willing to give a card and a flyer to the clerk, so we've got it there, so we can make sure people have access to it?
Absolutely.
And then, are you guys at events locally around? I think I've seen you at the Pasadena Farmers Market. Can you tell us a little bit about some of the events that you have attended in this area, so people can see you at, at other places as well?
Yeah. So, our team has been throughout Altadena, Eaton, Pasadena area, attending events. I am newer to the field, so I've only been out here probably for about a couple weeks. So, I've been to fewer events. But I would definitely like to come and provide our resources if there are events that you all have, where you think we could be helpful. But we have been to a couple of community events in Altadena this week.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Hill.
Of course.
Madam Clerk, who do we have next?
Mr. Mayor, Filippio.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been here. So, it's nice to see you all. Happy twenty twenty-five. Kind of late, a little bit delayed, but I really do want to thank our first responders. I, I live at the margin right between, I mean, right by Marte de la Rosa. So, the fire was personal and very close. And they did a wonderful job protecting us, all of the first responders, fire, police, even the neighborhood, neighboring police departments. So, a great shout-out to them. Very appreciative of their work. I also want to thank Marte de la Rosa, you know. They did us a real great favor. They actually saved the neighborhood. I don't know if you guys knew that. Annually, because we always have to bug them, and we do call them for maintaining the field, they do a wonderful job. Brother John, he's gotten older, but he has a staff that does that. So, they would go ahead and manage that field. Janet Solinsky, and she's the Director of Facility Operations, at, during the twenty twenty-four and the latter twenty twenty-four, managed that field. And I think that by doing that, it really saved the, the neighborhood. And we were lucky, because fire came right... And we were lucky, because fire came right up to the edge of our backyard. CAL FIRE was there and managed to have protected us as well. So a little bit late, but I think a bit of late than never, so to our first responder, yeah, good job. Really why I came down here, is to discuss, the new fire has its severity zone map. I'm sure you guys are very much familiar with that. It was released in March of this year, March twenty-four, and it shows how bad we are as a community in the fire hazard area. Marte de la Rosa certainly is all surrounded by RID. I'm right at the margin between what would be high fire hazard to very high fire hazard. If you look at the map, it's pretty much self-explanatory, it has the scale on it and all, and depending on the accuracy, I mean, I can claim that I'm, you know, maybe forty feet away from that, but if you kind of blink, you would say that, no, I'm right in the high fire zone. So that gives me something that I really want you guys to go back and think about. We've been told that the meadows is gonna be all hardened structures, and we all thought that, well, hardened structures would be nice and would be more fire resistant, and that's probably about as much as it will be, I've got thirteen seconds. I toured the Upper Hastings area, and I saw a lot of new hardened structures. Well, unfortunately, they are ground level, because they burnt down. So my appeal is to, you know, bring a little history back, is unfortunately, by adding more fuel to the open areas, it doesn't help my neighborhood. And my neighborhood is just one little speck in that area, but if you look at that map, you can see that there are many, many surrounding neighborhoods that would welcome, you know, the barrier that the, that the open field, you know, gives us, the protection that it gives us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Filippio.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Chris Semino.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm Chris Semino, representing the Chamber of Commerce, and I want to invite everybody to our Wisteria Fest this Saturday. I wanted to let everybody know that we are gonna have a very successful event. The date has changed to a Saturday, it's later in the season, the vine is still blooming, not as fantastic as last week, but it's still blooming. We have over a hundred vendors gonna be in town. This year, we've invited our members to come out of their stores and have their own vendor spot in front of their store. Restaurants are gonna be open. Being on a Saturday, we really think that it's gonna really benefit our businesses. We only have a couple of food trucks, and they're gonna be located by the car show. The car show, we have over a hundred cars coming, very excited about that. And also in Memorial Park, we're really excited about Earth Day being in the park with us, because we're not gonna have any bands in the park this year. We're gonna have the bands in the downtown, in front of the theater, on our new patio there in front of the theater, and also in Kirsten Court. So we're gonna have music throughout the event, instead of just in Kirsten Court for the few sitting in chairs to enjoy that. So we're gonna try this out this year, being on Saturday, we think it's gonna be very nice. We also have a playland for kids this year, it's gonna be kind of new to us. Winterfest, we draw kids into the park, so this one, we thought we would draw some. We have blowups for teenage kids, we have blowups for little children, and then some couple carnival games, and that'll all be located in the south end of the park. So invite everybody, the whole town, we're really excited about that, and that's probably it. It's Saturday from nine to five. Five o'clock is gonna be a hard shutdown, so we can open the streets by six o'clock, and people can unwind after the big event all day long, especially us volunteers. That's about all I have. I do want to say one more thing, it can't be said enough, but the response, the public, the staff and public works led by Arnolfo Genez, James, and Steve McGee was fantastic. I think the town got cleaned up in a timely manner. No one expected the mud to caress the wash there at Camillo. No one expected that much mud to come out of Stone House and on Woodland. Well, Woodland, we kind of expected that, but the response of the public works did, and city staff with their announcements and everything, I think they did a fantastic job, and I just want to congratulate them for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Semino, and thank you for the update on the Wisteria, and also for your own leadership for the mudslides. You helped us identify many of those areas with all of your history and knowledge of the city, so you helped protect homes and protect lives, so thank you for your efforts on that. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speaker cards submitted.
Great, all right. So now we'll go ahead and move on to presentations. Our first presentation tonight is a proclamation in recognition of National Library Week, and also, what's it, Library, National Library Workers' Day. So I'm gonna come up with a nice proclamation. I'm gonna start, and then I'll hand it over to you. So proclamation in recognition of National Library Week, whereas libraries speak, spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. Whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. Whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. Whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme Drawn to Liberty. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Sierra Madre City Council that the week of April sixth to twelfth, twenty twenty-five, is National Library Week in the city of Sierra Madre. All residents are encouraged to visit their library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community. Presented this eighth day of April, two thousand twenty-five, Mayor Robert Parkhurst, Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe, council members Jean Goss, Edward Garcia, and Kelly Crebs.
Thank you, Mayor Parkhurst, and our wonderful city council. I would like to bring up all of our library workers that are here today. Sorry, I'm coming up. I also want to take the time to thank our library trustees that are also here today, if you could come up, please. I see you all. So our libraries here are nothing without our community and our wonderful staff and those that support us, so we have two trustees here and quite a few staff. And I just wanted to take the time to say thank you to the city for your continued support for the library. We will always do what we can to serve our city best, so thank you. Oh, yeah, let's do that.
All right. Our next presentation is from Assistant City Manager Miguel Hernandez to give us an update on the Eaton fire and the mid-February winter, excuse me, winter storm recovery. Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the city council. I will be providing a brief update on the city's recovery efforts following the Eaton fire and the mid-February winter storm events. But first of all, I want to take a moment to recognize the outstanding efforts of our recovery team, Joseph Nosrat, Anthony Rainey, and Eric Lozick, for their dedication and hard work, their commitment has been instrumental throughout the process. I would also like to extend my sincere thanks to all of the supporting staff, including public works, fire, police, and the logistics team for their continued cooperation and responsiveness in providing critical information. Their understanding and support are truly appreciated as we look through the, to work through this recovery together. As part of our ongoing recovery efforts, the city continues to coordinate across departments to ensure readiness for state and federal disaster recovery processes. On April first, just recently, FEMA representatives from the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP, met with public work staff to discuss post-fire flood risk considerations and identify opportunities for technical assistance. This information, this informal meeting allowed FEMA to better understand Sierra Madre's unique post-fire vulnerabilities and provided insight into flood plan, flood plane management compliance, NFIP eligibility, and local flood insurance needs. Also recently, on March seventeenth, we held a preliminary coordination meeting with CAL OES and FEMA to review expectations and requirements for our upcoming recovery scoping meeting, RSA meeting, scheduled for April sixteenth, that's next week. This meeting is critical, is a critical milestone in the FEMA public assistance process. Public Works has designated Eric Lozick to lead the documentation process with an emphasis on aligning the IDE, Initial Damage Estimate, with FEMA two fourteen forms. Photographs and cost reports related to fire, police, and public works activities, staff across all departments are actively collaborating to ensure we are fully prepared for the recovery scoping meeting. In addition to these efforts, we are actively working on the after-action report for the Eaton fire. Initial outreach began with an internal questionnaire sent to city staff, city council, and Sierra Madre search and rescue. To expand this initiative, the city contracted with KJ Consultants to help gather broader community input. This will include online surveys, mailed invitations, and dedicated public website, and a series of facilitated workshops over the next few weeks. KJ Consultants will be launching two separate websites, one for community engagement and another exclusively for staff communications, allowing us to keep data streams distinct while providing flexibility to merge information as needed. In anticipation of broader outreach, we are preparing a mailer list for distribution of postcards to inform the community about upcoming in-person and virtual meetings, as well as how to access the project website. A draft of the postcard will be reviewed prior to mailing, and we are currently looking at the calendar to schedule the meetings. Additional virtual breakout meetings will focus on four specific subjects, one, alert and warning communications, two, evacuations, three, sheltering, and four, recovery. The final after-action report is scheduled, or is expected to conclude by June thirtieth, and it will provide valuable insights to improve future emergency planning and coordination. Internally, we continue to place a strong emphasis on financial reconciliation. FEMA and CAL OES will closely review the city's financial records alongside damage reports and two fourteen logs. In March, a financial report was circulated to the executive team summarizing key expenditures. For example, three hundred and seventeen thousand in personnel services and two hundred and thirteen thousand in non-personnel services, for a total of five hundred, approximately around five hundred and thirty thousand dollars recorded in the city's financial system. Departments are expected to validate these figures and resolve discrepancies before the RSA meeting next week. If misalignments exist between departments' records and the city's system of record, we will either reconcile them or consult with CAL OES regarding the next steps on that. We also recently met with representatives from the city's insurance pool, PRISM, to review the broader recovery strategy discussed, immediate goals that include finalizing site assessments, preparing for FEMA inspections, and evaluating insurance eligibility. To summarize, the recent events, the Eaton fire resulted in an emergency declaration at all levels of government. While twenty-two private structures were destroyed, city-owned infrastructure sustained some notable damage. As a result of the Eaton fire, the February thirteen, twenty twenty-five winter storm brought an intense atmospheric river event, leading to heavy rainfall, debris flow, and road closures, and a cleanup-related damage to public infrastructure. While FEMA has issued declarations for the fire and windstorm events, the winter storm has yet, not yet been federally declared. The winter storm damage has mainly affected city infrastructure, particularly roads and trails, which have been strained by heavy equipment used in debris removal. The city is currently working with CAL OES on storm-related mud and debris flow and continuously assessing infrastructure damage. Insurance claims have been submitted to PRISM and are currently under review. The strategic approach moving forward includes submitting all losses to PRISM for evaluation, securing denial letters for uncovered items, and aligning documentation for FEMA submissions. Our key next steps are consolidating and updating the damage inventory list for both fire and storm impacts, finalizing insurance claims, and ensuring that all materials are ready for the April sixteenth RSA meeting. In conclusion, after the RSA meeting, the city will have sixty days to submit all documentation to FEMA. During this time, staff will continue monitoring infrastructure conditions, updating cost documentation, and maintaining coordination with both PRISM and CAL OES to support a smooth and complete reimbursement process. This concludes the update, and I have, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Hernandez. So you mentioned that, as we know, that FEMA has declared an emergency for the wind and fire event, but has not declared for the subsequent storm and debris flow. Is that because there's a certain dollar threshold that needs to be met, or do you know why FEMA has not declared that?
That's part of it. Currently, the county is working on declaring, for the county and for the state to declare. As a local agency, we did proclaim an emergency, which allowed us to start the recovery process, the documentation process, in the event that the state does declare a state of emergency for that event. Part of this, too, is the connection between the fire and then resulting, the after-effects of the result of the fire, which is the winter storm. A lot of what we're doing in collecting data is a result of the fire, even though the winter storm also is a part of that. We're connecting everything together so that it falls under the fire and windstorm declaration.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Assistant City Manager Hernandez. All right, our next presentation is from Fernando Sanchez, the Vice President of Cosmont, and he's gonna give us a presentation on the downtown market assessment that we had conducted.
Mayor, before Fernando takes the podium, I just want to inform the council that we did hire Cosmont to do a market assessment of our downtown to develop key economic strategies. This included meeting with staff, a tour of the downtown with the chamber president, and we also had a meeting here in the council chambers where we invited all downtown businesses and the chamber to take input, and all that was captured in the preparation of the report. With that, I can turn it over to Ken Hira or Fernando Sanchez.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor and members of the council. My name's Ken Hira, President of Cosmont Companies. My colleague Fernando Sanchez is here and he did most of the work. So with any technical questions, he's definitely available, I'm available. We'd love to talk through this with you, get to the Q and A. I'd like to give a executive summary version of the report, the analysis that we did. I'm sorry it's been so long from when we started it, but I know there were some real issues in between and I also want to say that my heart goes out to the city, given all the tragedy that you all went through. That was pretty difficult and I got some pictures from City Manager about some of the mud and, and et cetera. So big cleanup, we're involved in LA to try to actually help them with a tax increment district to try to build back infrastructure and I think for this re- region, it's really the same circumstance. So, you know, we'll do whatever we can as a company that's been around for thirty-eight years to help in rebuilding, if you will. And I think we're also working with the city of Malibu now on some of their recovery issues. But nonetheless, for the, for the city of Sierra Madre, you know, what our assignment was, was a little bit of a discreet assignment, but it was a market overview and market assessment to understand where things are today and really focusing obviously in on your downtown, which is a, which is a very cool downtown. The categories that we went through were SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, economic development considerations and action items. And then there's a lot of data that we collected on demographics, economic profile, as well as market information. All that, all that information should be available to you all and I'm, and we're certainly going to be available for questions. I'm not going to read through all the slides, I can barely see what that says anyways. But the summary of, of again, what downtown Sierra Madre represents and our analysis and estimation is, it's certainly a hidden gem with authenticity and walkability. Fernando and I were just talking beforehand, these are all things that are, are obvious. But the authenticity and walkability of it, I find interesting because there aren't tons and tons of walkable, cool walkable communities necessarily in LA. There's not cool walkable communities in a lot of different places. And a lot of the cities we work with, hundreds, they're trying to achieve that in different locations. So we see that as something that is a valuable asset to your city and the region. We did lots of data analytics, one of the resources we used was Placer AI. There's about two million visitors that came over a one-year period from October of twenty-three to September of twenty-four. The demographics of those folks, because we can pull that information from some of the Placer data that we get, is very strong. You know, fifty-eight percent bachelor's degree or greater, your residents have even a higher degree of education, which is very impressive. And then average household income of the visitors was a hundred and seventy thousand. Your citizens, your residents have even a higher average household income. So that just tells us there's high education, high incomes, you know, high interest level in these types of amenities and your downtown represents that. Folks are coming from Altadena, Arcadia, Monrovia, Pasadena, et cetera. And some of the challenges that were identified, because we did go through not quite a formal survey, I believe a survey can be done and, and we could probably help on that on a go-forward basis. But we were here in this very room with the chamber and a lot of the businesses and unfortunately it wasn't a, a super-long meeting, but we got a lot of good feedback. That feedback is important to us in order for us to present to you all a market assessment, which is what we do a lot of. So some of the commentary and stakeholder input is coming from that meeting and some other conversations. But the chamber and its resources, if you will, with respect to social media, is really going to be pretty important and we can talk about that. You might hear me talk a lot about social media today because I do think that the effort on your part will be well-served if marketing and, and the outreach to folks, so, so people can realize the hidden gem that you are, is going to become a very important step going forward. And I think the chamber and the city, at the end of the day, need to continue to collaborate, you know, as, as strongly as possible. We work with a lot of communities and I think where the chamber and the cities are in sync with each other and they're trying to be very productive and use the tools that are available to them, including some of the tax revenues that are, that are part of the, the Property Improvement District and Property District. Those revenue streams can be put to work. The downtown hosts some events, we think there could be more to drive more trips, more interest, more visitors, if you will. And one comment that's made to be clear is the downtown can't rely solely or just on local support. And we know how important local support is because it is at the end of the day, you have about eleven thousand residents, again, incomes, education levels. But the folks coming in from out of town, there's like three hundred thousand some odd people, those two-point-one million visits, they're spending money in your town and they're spending money in your downtown and your downtown is a destination that's on their map. So I know there's a fine line there between, well, gosh, do we want to double that because Monrovia's got four million visits? What do we want to be as a community? That's going to be up to you all to make that decision. But the businesses here are going to benefit from, continue to be, to, to generate revenue and continue to be profitable if we have visitation, you know, at its, at its highest levels. And we've worked for a lot of communities, I did some retailer workshops in St. Helena, California, believe it or not, and I'm going back up there again. And one thing I did in their downtown, I walked it and I talked to all the businesses, this was some years ago, because they were struggling a little bit. And St. Helena, California and Santa Barbara, California and Santa Monica, California, they, they've all been struggling with, you know, how do we keep our storefronts occupied? How do we keep our, how do we keep visitors coming to our downtowns in these great walkable areas? And even five years ago, when I was working with St. Helena, I took a little chart and I looked at all the businesses and I said, okay, what social media platforms are they on and how many followers do they have? Just one example of something. And I found that some of those had so few followers that it was going to be hard for them to drive that continued sort of national or international patronage. Because you can get a lot done if you communicate with your customers in a way that is reaching all the demographics. And we were talking a little earlier about how important it is that we, the Olympics are coming up and all those events that the mayor just mentioned, which are so relevant to, I think, how you can capture some of that value, quote-unquote. But we also need to reach a millennial population who want to come and think that downtown Sierra Madre is a cool place, which it is. Well, we're not going to catch the millennial population who have lots of money to spend unless we're on a certain platform, a certain social media platform. You know, hate to say it, they don't email, they don't talk on the phone. They're on social media. I have two of them as children, I call them children, twenty-five and twenty-one and, you know, those are folks that are looking for cool experiences. And you have an experiential downtown that I think can be leveraged. So some of the potential action items include improving communication between the city and the chamber, utilizing the social media to encourage those visits, hosting new events, more events, taste ofs, maybe some monthly events, weekly events for that matter. And then developing some technical assistance and some potential business improvement programs. So we went through SWOT, you know, strengths, hidden gem, authenticity, walkable. Challenges or weaknesses is the Chamber of Commerce resources. And I understand the Chamber of Commerce and, and they looked at our report and I appreciated their feedback. I think we just want to keep collaborating and I think the more resources that they have, the better job that they can do. And it seems like that's the direction that, that everybody's heading, so that's pretty positive. And then, you know, activity after eight or nine PM. There's lots of communities that we go do coun- council meetings in and do workshops with and at the end of an eight o'clock city council meeting in different places I go to, I, there's no place to eat. And so I know that in certain cases here, it's after the theater or even at, as a nighttime activity. Are there things that can be promoted that end up going on past eight or nine PM? I'm not saying we want to be open until 2 AM, but what happens between nine and eleven? Where again, maybe we drive some of that millennial traffic. Those folks don't go to bed early, my kids don't. So some of the other challenges and then opportunities, you know, promote the destination that is Sierra Madre, utilize some existing resources and throw some more resources at it. Some of the threats, of course, is, you know, the, the cost of those resources, needless to say. And then there's competition. I mean, city of Laguna Beach is doing a retail consultant RFP. Why do they need to do that? It's Laguna Beach, California, everybody goes there no matter what. No, they're challenged in their downtown, Laguna Beach, California, by vacancies and challenges of getting businesses open and staying operating. And in that instance, there's a lot of competition. And that, and that's also what happens here. You've got Old Town Pasadena, you have Old Town Monrovia, but there's some real positives. I was, I was talking to the mayor beforehand and, and Olympics are coming, all these events are coming and everybody's thinking about how do we leverage that? Way to leverage those, the, you know, billions of dollars that are going to be spent and those seven Super Bowls that are going to happen or whatever over that period of time is, got to start right now. It's got to start with a, a comprehensive, you know, multi-channel approach to marketing. And that's how we're going to get their attention to be able to come here as Pasadena or the Rose Bowl's only seven or eight miles away, downtown Pasadena is six miles away, et cetera. You're going to be in close proximity to those activities. So I'm going to probably kind of wrap up a little bit on the big picture here of three areas that we kind of zeroed in on. Visibility and exposure, which is again, improving those lines of communication, utilizing social media and AI for that matter, developing a multi, multi-pronged marketing approach and then obviously collaborating with the chamber as you have been in the past. Trips in place, so there might, there's going to need to be budget maybe allocated toward how do we keep these activities going? The farmers markets, the taste ofs, et cetera. Leverage existing assets, maintain consistent events in downtown throughout the year, increase the frequency of those, obviously consider scheduling those events so there's not any conflicts, particularly with small business states. And then lastly, and I probably should apologize for the reference to BEAR because I think it was just as I heard the mayor and I, and I don't know whether it's a pun, whether there's humor in it. It, it might just be insensit- insensitivity on our part. But I don't think you should be out promoting bear programs and I just, we just didn't think about it. So I, I kind of apologize for that. But I will say that that acronym is what we're using with a lot of our city clients when business attraction, business retention and business expansion are important components. And we are working in those capacities for lots and lots of cities. There's a big shopping center conference in Las Vegas, you know, with twenty thousand people and that's all we're doing for these clients of ours. Ten or twelve of them said, we need you to go out and help us with business attraction. I also remind some of our clients that business retention can be as important as business attraction. I don't think you have dramatic vacancies, you only have two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail only. But it's not like there's big giant holes in that retail per se. There are some cities with malls and, and extensive retail projects that have got twenty thousand square foot vacancies, forty thousand square foot vacancies. They need to be at ICSC in Las Vegas, marketing the heck out of those opportunities. This is different, this is a, a local walkable downtown and it's authentic and it's not fraught with a bunch of holes per se. But business retention is important and also business attraction for, you know, spaces that, that aren't leased up. I want to point out one other thing before I pause, but we looked at and there's a lot of information that follow all these slides in the report and again, available for questions. But I also want to remember, it was interesting, I met with, with City Manager months ago. There's a pie chart in our report and it shows you where your revenues come from. I just want to remind the City Council that the revenues come from, if there are three categories, property tax, there's, there's more than that, but if there are three categories which we focus on, there's property tax, sales tax and transient occupancy tax, TOT. We look at that for all cities because we find that that's kind of part of the definition of economic development is where's big revenue streams coming from. Across California, cities get about forty-one percent of their tax revenues from property tax. Property taxes represent about forty-one percent of the pie chart. Twenty-two percent come from sales tax and about six to eight percent come from hotel tax. In your case, you have fifty-eight percent, give or take, coming from property tax and only three percent coming from sales tax and none from TOT. Now, right, wrong or indifferent, that's what it is. My point about the three percent in sales taxes compared to all other cities at twenty-two percent, some cities are, are even more heavily reliant on sales tax. Some cities have malls and they generate forty or fifty percent of their, of their general fund tax revenues and they're at more exposure to how sales tax fluctuate. You're not at that type of exposure from a general fund perspective. And I just think it's an important point to make, which is in our analysis, we're focused on your downtown and we want it to be as vibrant as possible from a revenue perspective and sales tax perspective. It's not the thing that moves your needle in your general fund, it's property tax. You have a super-high-value community, you know, million and a half bucks median home value, I think. And again, that wealth is helping your general fund, you know, continue to operate. I just think that it's, how do we zero in on making the downtown a cool place, a destination, experiential and, and, and a maximization of the experience for your, your constituents, your citizens, as well as the visitors. So I, I think I'll stop there, we've got all kinds of information in our report. And we, I'm available for Q and A and you can take us to any slide and Fernando and I can help answer questions.
Got a question?
Great, thank you. Councilor Morgas, please.
Fascinating report and I've been on the council for a long time and I've never seen anything this detailed and I, I love the thirty-thousand-foot view you're giving us. So I, I, I'd like to know from your experience, to how, to what degree do cities actually support chambers of commerce? I mean, how far, how extensive can that get? And because we don't do a lot with them in terms of housing them or providing them with funds or we do cooperate with them, we work with them. I'm just wondering from where we're at, maybe at the low scale of subsidization or, or organizational support to the highest scale, what's out there?
It, it's a great question. I, I wish I could answer it more comprehensively, but I can tell you, I have some examples of cities that we did work with. We did an economic strategic plan as an example for the city of San Rafael up in Northern California, Samhain County, or Marin County. And their chamber was lockstep, a huge part of their economic development efforts. City of Folsom, it is their economic development effort. Now, there's pros and cons to that, in so much as in Folsom, an opinion, I did an economic development strategic plan, City Council presentation, should they have some in-house resources also at the city level? Because you can't change zoning, you can't approve a CUP, you can't do certain things unless you're in City Hall. But they were, their economic development efforts, all of them, if you will, are with their chamber. Huge part and their chamber is all over social media. It's called like Folsom Forward or Future Folsom and I've given presentations to them, they've asked me to do that. Big part of their economic development efforts. Let me take it to the other extreme for a second. Go to Santa Barbara, they had these vacancies on State Street, they asked us to do a study, we did. And, you know, here's the bottom line, ten blocks of homogeneous retail that used to be really cool, it's never going to be filled again. So you got to really start thinking out of the box. They had zero economic development department, zero economic development effort. And if I can say it out loud, they're not business-friendly. It's a really, really, really tough place to go, go get a permit. Really tough place to go open a business. But they have high standards and they have high architectural expectations. So they weren't in the economic development business. And I want to make sure I'm not, I want to make sure I'm answering your question because I think you can leverage or utilize a chamber in a way where you might still need some resources internally. You know, I use the term liaison or ombudsman or someone who can help walk businesses through that permitting process. And, and we've used that as an example in many of these different studies that we've done. You're a small community, you know, you got to figure out how to allocate those resources properly. I think a chamber can be very effective for, for you all.
But implied in the question is the idea that if we were to help the chamber, it's not a subsidization, it's actually an investment, if, if that's the way you're put, if we do it right.
Yeah.
And there's buy-in and we have a well-organized chamber, is that, is that your position?
I, I would say that's my position.
Okay.
Can I add a follow-up question then for our city attorney? So when I first went through my onboarding, there was discussion and some of the examples were what happens when cities are working with their chamber, giving money to their chamber? working with their chamber, giving money to their chamber, and its public resources being used as a private entity. And how that's not, they should be very distinct, separate.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the problem you might run into is constitution, there's the prohibition against a gift of public funds. And so like Councilor Morgos was saying, uh, if, if funds are going to be allocated to any kind of chamber activity, you have to be very careful to make sure that you clarify in whatever M O U or document that's allocating those funds, what the public purpose is that's being served by those funds. Uh, so it's possible you can do it, you just have to be careful about doing it and be very thoughtful about the public purpose.
Can I follow that up? Would that also include providing them maybe space in a, in a public building for free or at a subsidized rate?
And, are you talking about the chamber itself or businesses?
Chamber, the chambers though.
Uh, that, other cities do do stuff like that, yes, so it's possible.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, presumably the support for that is what we're talking about, right? I mean, to the extent that the chamber is working to promote and develop business within the city, that's, you know, the demonstration of the public benefit, as long as it's not benefiting like a particular business or, you know, a particular segment of businesses.
Ri- right, and so you, this would be subject to a lease agreement or some kind of M O U. And that document would clarify on what, so maybe the consideration for that contract isn't money. The consideration for that contract is something else, some effort expended toward some objective that the city's trying to obtain.
And I, it was just two quotes that I typed out from my onboarding. Maintaining separation ensures that the chamber's advocacy efforts do not unduly influence city policies or decisions, and that the city government can act impartially in serving all residents. The other quote was the city government should not be involved in the chamber's internal operations or membership decisions.
Correct.
And that's just what I was worried about, was, was, I, I mean, we all, like I said, we, we cross lines all the time where we're volunteering for types of things, and, but when it comes to the policy and decision-making and spending public funds, you know, we're really responsible for that, and if we're giving, you know, we have to be, I was figuring, we have to be extremely cautious about how we're doing that when it comes to another entity running money.
Right, and I was just going to add the, you, you also have to give consideration to other nonprofits operating within the city. So someone can ask, why are you, why are you favoring this nonprofit over another nonprofit? And so you'd have to come up with some policy objective basis to make that determination, I think.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the report analysis and presentation, it was great. Um, you said a few things that, um, that I've been saying for a while. Um, one was, I, you know, going back to the candidate forums in two thousand, if you remember those. Um, we were in a recession during that time, a COVID recession, and I said, you know, it's painful that we don't have big box stores, uh, car dealerships, shopping malls, but for us, it's actually, we don't rely on that sales tax revenue. So i- it's a benefit, but we would sure like to have that revenue when it's there. Um, so I, I like, I'm grateful that you kind of echoed that and uncovered that. Um, but one of the things about the analysis, and I, and I think, I don't want to speak for the city manager, the reason we kind of wanted to go forward with this was, we're, we're facing a structural deficit in our, in our budget. And revenue generation is one of the big reasons why we wanted to bring you on board and kind of take a look at our downtown. Um, you, you mentioned that we're a hidden gem, absolutely. A lot of residents want to actually keep it that way. Um, but the other thing you said that was very important, that I've been saying for a while, is, um, our residents do enjoy our downtown business district. And what a benefit to us that we could go to Taylor's and get, you know, get a, you know, a pound of coffee and some bread and some milk and all those things, because it's there. But it, but the thing that you said, it cannot survive, or the businesses cannot survive just on our locals. We do need some type of visitor presence in order to keep that business district going, and I think that's important. Um, so there's a, there's a balance that we have to maintain here in the city of staying a hidden gem, yet attracting individuals here to keep our downtown business afloat, so that we have that, that service available to us as residents, so we don't have to leave. Um, so my, my questions, our question is, probably not going to have casino here in town. We haven't discussed maybe a single cannabis dispensary, because that, actually, that could probably drive a lot of revenue. So, other than those couple things, what types of strategies have you implemented in other cities that can have some type of revenue enhancement for the local government, uh, rather than just, um, enhancing the, the downtown business district? Or is not that, is that not within the scope of what you do?
Well, I, I, I think a very fair, um, analysis, and yes, there is a fine line in driving revenue, I, I totally understand. That's why I did want to point out and remind everyone that the general fund is, is not really that heavily reliant. Uh, because the three percent, that's the lowest I've ever seen, uh, of, of cities. Doesn't mean that it isn't important, it doesn't mean that those sales tax revenues aren't important, because the cash registers have to ring in order for those businesses to, to be, to survive, and for you all to benefit from some of that in your general fund. The service industry, which is kind of part of this topic here, is alive and well. And the, you know, the spa business, the, um, detox business, the nail and salon business, and all those services that are so important that you can't do on the internet. So a big part of, we were talking about what you can and can't do on the internet, started seven, eight, nine years ago. And the Amazon effect is, is alive and well. Uh, also, there's a lot of money being spent from the homes. So, so I want, so I want to pivot to that in one second. A lot of money being spent from the homes, because people can buy things online. But is there incentive programs, are there ways to get folks to come and be revenue generators? Yeah, sure, there is. There can be a way to say, hey, we, we want to incentivize tax revenue generators. Um, we want to incentivize hotels, and we haven't talked a lot about hotels either. It was referred to in our report. Now, you've got to find a location for a hotel, you don't have any hotels or T O T for that matter. But if there was an opportunity, the hotel business seems like they're doing pretty good and trying to achieve the leisure traveler right now in a post-pandemic era. The working environment is different, the working hotels are different, business hotels. But hotels generate so much revenue for cities, it's unbelievable.
Could you, could you give me a ballpark, let's say, let's say like a boutique twenty-five or fifty room?
Yeah.
I don't know if that even exists.
No, they, that exists, you know.
What kind of revenue that could generate?
Your kind of environment, boutique hotel, maybe not twenty-five, maybe fifty rooms, I think would be so interesting because of the whole hidden gem component and something that's not, you know, in neon lights. But I'll, I'll use the example, and we can interpolate, you know, a hundred-room hotel, a lot of them are a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty rooms. They're throwing off three to five hundred grand, and some of them are throwing off five hundred plus. And I can do the math, I mean, it's an A D R times seventy percent occupancy. Call it a hundred and seventy-five bucks in your market, times a seventy percent occupancy, give or take. And if you had a T O T rate of ten percent, it's probably generating four or five hundred thousand bucks. So you can cut that in half, but a boutique hotel might generate a two hundred dollar A D R, average daily rate. I mean, you know, fifty rooms, nice, higher end, and something real experiential as well. You're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, when I travel to St. Helena next week, they're in the millions of dollars of T O T, because it's ridiculous what people spend on A D R for those hotels, eight hundred to a thousand bucks plus, plus, plus. Not everywhere, not all the time, but in the luxury category. And so they're looking at economic development at a million and a half dollars for one hotel, depending on its size. All I'm saying is, is we've done comparisons of retail sales tax revenue on a, on a spectrum that gets you to a hotel. And the T O T that generates from it is far greater than a retailer is ever going to gen- retail sales tax is ever going to generate for you guys. So I, I just wanted to point that out. The other part of the analysis, it's in our report, is the amount of money that's being spent, that's generating tax revenue, sales tax revenue from each home. And I'd love to go to that, just because it's one of our favorite analyses these days. Um, and we did it for this, Fernando and I did it for this very reason. I think it was fifty-three, studying it this morning. Okay, so just real quick, and I, I, I don't want to have to go through a big algebra exercise, but if you have eleven thousand folks that live in your city, and there's five thousand households, they're spending a certain amount online. And you take your income at a hundred and ninety-four grand, you apply eighty-four percent of what is spendable, twenty-four percent on what's spent on retail, and twenty percent spent online. If you don't like those measures and statistics, change them. It doesn't matter. It relates to thirty-seven million dollars of e-commerce sales coming out of the homes of the residents that live in your community. Even if you don't agree with me, make it thirty million bucks. It's a big number. That's just the portion of sales tax revenue that's generated from the people who live in your homes, assuming they're shopping online. The three hundred thousand people that come to visit you, it's nine hundred million dollars of sales that's being spent online. It's the equivalent of two million square feet of brick and mortar retail. So I did this for all the Silicon Valley cities. There was like a million households. It equated to twenty-nine million square feet of retail, shopping center square footage that otherwise would have been built, that was being spent out of the homes that lived there. Again, even if you don't agree with my assumptions, and if you want to be more conservative, it could be twenty million square feet in Silicon Valley. And that's why we're challenged by brick and mortar retail and big boxes. And I appreciate your comment about, thank God you don't have a mall with a bunch of big box retailers and auto malls, because they're all wondering about their future.
Thank you, thank you. And do you guys, do you guys do lobbying too? Because obviously, we're not trying to take money away from Ontario, or, um, you know, the Amazon generators that get a little ton of the tax.
Right.
Um, but obviously, that would be, um, we'd be grateful for some of that tax revenue to come back to our city. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, um, this is a delicate question, um, but kind of an outcropping of what we've been talking about. You know, you pointed out that, and as, as did Councilor Garcia, that our reliance or lack of reliance on sales tax is sort of a double-edged sword. Sort of part of that, at least impliedly, is that, and, and based on, on, on your report, it, it, it doesn't seem like your conclusion is that work done to bolster and, and support our downtown would turn into a revenue solution for our city. And I just want to sort of put that out bluntly, because we're kind of dancing around it a little bit. But my, my sense from your report, you don't come out and say it directly, but, you know, we could put a ton of resources, you know, citywide chamber, individual businesses into our downtown area. It's likely not a solution to a deficit situation in our, in our, in our budget.
I appreciate.
Is that fair?
I, I think, I think it's fair. I'll just try to react to it. I think it's, I'm so glad that you said it, because that's kind of what we're saying. That's the reason for the three percent analysis. I needed to know, because there's a city in Northern California, it's like eighty percent reliant on sales tax. It's crazy, right? Because there's a few people that live there and they have a Costco. I, I'm just saying, on a per capita basis.
Right.
But, but let me answer that in two different ways. I think, one, because of the low amount of the impact of sales tax to your, um, general fund, the answer to what you just said about is it, will it move your needle from a deficit perspective? I think the short answer is not really, or no. But the, is there a return on investment for making sure that retail is still working in your downtown? Yes, there is. I mean, by the way, food is retail, which generates sales tax revenue. The restaurant business is alive and well, generates re- uh, retail sales tax. Those are all things you can't do on the internet. The experiences, you know, are those sales tax revenue generators? Maybe, maybe not, but they have to be synergistic. You know, the spas and salons and, and places where, we're in a health and wellness, um, themed, I, I think trend in a very big way. I think folks are very focused on health and wellness. And that comes in these little boutique, the gyms, the boutique versions of those gyms, you know. And again, that's not a sales tax revenue generator, but to me, I think it's a return on investment with respect to making sure businesses and occupancy and the, the tide, the rising of the tide of the, the quality of those businesses are at their highest levels. Because of your, your small slice of the pie from sales tax revenue, either way, it won't move the needle that much. Maybe getting a hotel would.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking at the comparison, some of, uh, comparisons you've done with, say, city of Monrovia. And I always try to look at small cities and see what they have done, and, um, fairly familiar with how they, they develop. Their economic development really took off about fifteen years ago, ten years ago. And I noticed that, I, a lot of it was, they did have more empty property, whereas we don't have empty retail property. They also really, um, molded who was going to go into those sites, and somehow, you know, a lot of cities do have assets. They purchase assets with the anticipation that that could be part of their economic development and, and income producing. And so I was wondering, did you analyze any ability for the city of Sierra Madre to either use property or assets we already own? Create abilities to make revenue, for instance, if we gave, you know, low interest loan or zero interest loan for the first six months, and that business comes in, takes off for the first year, and then creates revenue. Um, or any of our other buildings. Was that part of the analysis?
Yeah, I, I don't, I would say it's not exactly part of the analysis, I still, but I want to answer your question. On the incentivization, by the way, I mean, I think that's in the realm of economic development tools, you know. Facade improve, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, digress a little bit, but facade improvement programs, where the city's sharing in some of the investment with those small businesses, or those businesses, to help improve their, their, their facades. I mean, there are ways to work in partnership, I think, with businesses, owners of property, to help that whole upgrading and advancement and the, and the redevelopment or development of some of those properties. So I do think there's, there's lots of tools there that are available. When it comes to city-owned property, um, we didn't really look at it, I don't think you have a lot, maybe you do, here's the trick to it. Surplus Land Act. And it's a heck of a new part of the legislation, that S L A Surplus Land Act has been around a long time. But the state, um, I, I shouldn't say in its infinite wisdom, but the state said, hey, every city that owns property, every public agency that owns property, starting back in twenty nineteen, you have to offer to affordable housing developers first. Because the goal and objective of H C D is, we need more housing, which I don't disagree with at all. We need more affordable housing, and I don't disagree with that either. But properties you control that used to be in the realm of economic development, and it, it are now part of a process, a compliant process, that you have to go through. Now, we're in the middle of twenty, thirty, forty of those, or Cosmo companies, we're in the middle of a lot of those. And we've gotten through the compliant process and got a letter from H C D that was issued to a city and said, you've gone through the process, it was a six-month-plus process. You can now do with the property that, what you will, subject to a fifteen percent affordable covenant. That, that's, that's a good outcome for someone that says, gosh, I want to do a retail deal, I want to do a hotel deal. I want to build a market-rate housing, for that matter. Um, that's the covenant after going through the surplus land act, if you get through it. If not, the affordable housing developer is going to take your property and build it, not take it, but, but.
Utilize.
Utilize your property and build it, because it's all about compliance with H C D.
And the majority said of our business, businesses do not own their properties, correct?
Say it again.
You said the majority, I think in the report, it said the majority of, of the businesses in Sierra Madre are not property owners.
The, yeah, I mean, it's pretty common that, that, uh, and there's different types of improvement districts, right? There's P bids, and there's bids, bids are business improvement districts that are kind of marketing dollars. And then, of course, there's P bids, which are property business improvement districts. So you've got a lot of property owners, and then their tenants are the businesses. That's generally a format.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
So what's next?
Right. Our, our, our question that we put, I didn't put it on here, is so, so what and now what? Now what is the implementation steps that we've talked a bit about? And it's collaboration with the chamber, it's investment in economic development, it's policies. It could be policies, it could be facade improvement policies, it could be business incentive policies. And again, it's, it's, you know, you have, you can't, there's no gift of public funds unless you want to, uh, trigger the use of union labor, unless that's a goal and objective. So you, you're not giving stuff away. You need to work in collaboration where there's public benefit to what you do. And, um, and there's also public investment, you know, some of the cities we've dealt with, they've went in and put money into street improvements and sidewalk upgrades, et cetera. Um, those are expensive propositions, but that's part of upgrading infrastructure. Um, those are expensive propositions, but that's part of upgrading infrastructure. So, you know, I think we tried to, um, put those categories. And I think, as I said before, I'm sounding like a broken record about the social media and the importance of these major events that are coming. I think you want to be in the marketing business of, you know, the city of, of Sierra Madre. I mean, you know, we put some social media platforms on here. We had action items very specifically, uh, listed. We sum, and I summarized those. Trips in place, put yourself on the map. Try to think about some things where there's multiple hours within a day where there's activity, morning, noon, and night. Um, placemaking is a big part of what you do. You have a very, very, very cool and quaint, you know, and walkable and desirable downtown. I think it's just leveraging it, marketing it is the biggest push, which is this B E A R, um, acronym. Uh, you know, which is going to get you business, attraction, business retention, which I think is important. You have some longstanding businesses here and, you know, we want to make sure that they stick around and that their patronage is, is, uh, consistent.
Great.
Mayor, i- if I may add, I, I think for us, it was really important that if there was any way that we could attract businesses to move the needle in our revenue, we wanted to identify that. And what this, what this report showed is that, that, that's really not going to happen. But I think that there's tremendous benefit here in that we understand that Sierra Madre is very unique and people come here for an experience. And we can improve our residents' quality of life and the amenities that we provide by attracting the right types of businesses that will service our residents, but also attract residents from outside to help those businesses stay healthy and retain those businesses. And so for me, the takeaway is to continue to work with our chamber, grow that relationship so that we could work to bring in those types of businesses that our residents desire and that we can support and attract, uh, continue to attract, um, patrons from outside of Sierra Madre.
So how can the council support staff in the chamber in making that happen? And how quickly can we make it happen?
So I, I think, uh, we're going to probably have to do some additional analysis, work with the chamber, um, and, um, continue to strategize maybe with, with Cosmont to see what, what plan we can put together to bring those types of, of policy changes or, uh, back to the council to see if that's the direction that we want to move in.
Okay. I, I, I'd love to see Sierra Madre Boulevard shut down monthly, if not more frequently with events. I think that's. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, yeah, we'll, 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 you know, I'm gonna go balling and go out there. I'd like to see that it's going to drive, drive people here and it's going to drive, you know, the.
I just have one more question.
Yes.
I do too.
I'm curious about performing arts centers owned by municipalities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that a, is that a, does that pencil out for cities? Is that actually a, a net revenue gain, gain for them if it's done right?
I think it's really a community amenity. You know, I'm not sure it's an.
Really not a, an investment.
I don't think it's really an economic driver per se. I think it's important. I think those are challenging because they have to be programmed right. I think you have a cool theater. A lot of theaters, if you look around, have been pretty challenged by continuing to operate. Um, and, you know, so I'm not sure.
I'm talking about a city-owned performing arts center where you're bringing in all different types of entertainment.
Those are, those are ones where the question is how, how do you, how are you going to pay for it?
Right.
That's the one is, how do we finance it? How do we build a twenty million dollar, I'm making up a number, you know, performing arts concept? Um, it can happen maybe in city-owned property, but it's really not about a return on investment. It's really a community, uh, return.
Right, okay, thank you.
And, and I think, um, the closure of a street concept, I, I just want to echo. You know, when we went to Santa Barbara State Street, we made that recommendation. I had to duck when somebody threw, you know, one of the, somebody threw something at me and said, what are you talking about? They did it. They did a portion of State Street. It's closed. And, and that was, I'm not, forget about our recommendation. It was, it was somebody else's idea as well, and we just emphasized it could really work because of the walkability. That was before the pandemic. Then during the pandemic, all those restaurants that had to come out and the parklets and stuff onto the street, and then the decision was we should keep a portion of our, of State Street, Santa Barbara permanently closed. I think it's a huge success. Laguna Beach, same thing. It's a con, it's controversial. Closing Forest Avenue in Laguna Beach has become contro, I believe is a little bit controversial. I think it's a, it's a good thing to create that walkability. In your case, it's periodic or episodic and it could really create a cool vibe.
Is yours directly? Because I know we've got council.
Yes, specific about this. Interestingly, I feel, I, I, I go to leave, that the largest resistance to that idea of closure periodically and certainly permanently actually comes from our business community. I don't know if that came up in your meeting with the businesses in the chamber, but we actually get a lot of pushback from our businesses in closing down.
Because of parking. And parking is, you know, one of the most important assets for any retail, any business. I understand that. I'm not talking about permanently, but on a periodic basis, as long as there's parking provided. And the notion of San, Santa Clarita, another example, New Hall, we worked on that a long time ago. They close their street once a month, I think every Thursday, once a month. But they, they also created a parking structure. Okay, well, that's expensive, but they built it for that purpose. And there's public parking lots that create the park once concept. You're not walking ten blocks, you're walking two or three blocks. So it's not that it's just an automatic. It has to be properly designed and thought through. Because yes, businesses will say, well, gosh, you can't park in front of my store. Is my, is my business going to fail? Well, not if you create ten more, ten times more walkable patrons on that particular evening. In the case of Main Street in, um, Santa Clarita and New Hall, it's a big investment they do every Thursday on a monthly basis. They theme it and people spill out, the, the businesses spill out onto the street. Uh, and it's a big investment on the part of the community. They spent a lot of money on it, City of Santa Clarita. But, but it's once a month and it creates some level of success and interest based on a heightened amount of walkability.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Garcia.
So forgive me if, if it's in there and I, because I read the comprehensive report. I think we, we got it like two months ago or something like that. Um, so I don't recall if this was in there, but was there an analysis looking at the square footage of potential retail that is professional versus, well, let's put it this way. Tax, sales tax generating versus non-sales tax generating? Because I'm, I know there's quite a few places and we want some of those here, like, uh, uh, CPAs and things of that nature, but they don't generate tax revenue, only business license, which isn't.
Office, quasi-office.
Yeah, yeah.
Fernando, I don't know if we looked at that per se. Yeah, so we, we didn't really go there. I, I, I think it's doable to under, to analyze it. I think you could probably use SAIC codes to figure out what category is a particular business in. Um, could, could be worth looking at it as a ratio. Because it also drives parking. You know, if every one of your businesses on that street was restaurants and they were filled all the time, you'd have a parking problem. Because of the, the higher demand for restaurant space, a- as an example.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you all. Appreciate the discussion. Yeah, thank you.
All right, um, we're on to our last, uh, presentation. And we've got a library u- update fro- from Public Works Director, uh, Yanez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, tonight I'd like to update you on the library. I'm happy to say that things are moving along. Things are well underway. You may not be able to see it from the Mariposa or from the Boulevard, but things are clearly underway internally. What do I mean by that? There's a lot of framing going on in the actual existing building along with down, uh, what is now will be the, the first floor. A lot of foundation being laid, a lot of, uh, framing, nuts and bolts, along with a lot of piping and pipe being la- laid out. Um, so I'm, I'm very pleased with that. One thing that I'm very pleased about is the fact that we reached a milestone. That milestone is the fact that, uh, we are over the surprise, uh, got you, uh, phase. And that is, uh, findings, whether that be in the structure itself or underground and during the excavation. So we're clearly beyond that, that, uh, we're, it's all, uh, full steam ahead. Uh, but to elaborate more on that, I invited tonight, uh, Mr. Jonathan Reichert, who is a senior architect with TSK and the senior architect on the project. Jonathan?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Jonathan Reichert with TSK Architects. And, um, as Arnold Fo was saying, we're at a really exciting part of the project. There is a lot of interior framing that's going on, so we, we're just walking that today. And if you go down into the lower level, we now have our friends of the library bookstore and their storage room set out. Up on that first floor, we can see the new restrooms and the teen space that's coming together. And so it's really being able to begin to see kind of that building actually come together. And even more exciting is that the foundations for the addition have been poured. And within the next few weeks, we're going to start seeing that slab come down. And then, uh, within the few weeks after that, we're going to probably start seeing our steel coming up on the building. And so this is an exciting time where, you know, most construction projects, so much time is spent underground just preparing things. But once we get above ground, we're able to see a lot of progress made really fast. And so, um, as you start driving by on Mariposa, you're going to be able to see a lot of exciting things and wonderful things coming up. Um, and so, uh, I, I hope that people are able to really begin to see that, um, progress being made there.
Is that everything?
That, that's everything I had, yeah.
Fantastic. Any questions? Yes.
Um, I'm not sure if you're the right person or if Director Yanez needs to address this, but I know we had gotten a report, um, about the, uh, process being delayed. And I think the last one I heard, which might be a little bit dated, was, you know, thirty-something days. And I'm just wondering if there's been an update, um, to that. I, I, the, the promise was made that that was going to start to shrink, and I'm just wondering if it has.
Yes, it has. Uh, since the last report, uh, we were clearly over thirty-five days. Uh, now I'm happy to say that we'll be below thirty-five. We are still slightly over. Uh, the goal here is to, per week, be at least five days, uh, ahead of schedule. I mean, I mean, five days, uh, removing of the total thirty days, if that makes sense. Um, in the big picture.
Sorry, can I clarify? You mean, you mean like catching up?
Catching up.
Five days.
Five days per week.
Okay, thank you.
Six weeks, six weeks.
Yeah.
Um, in, in the big picture, in, in the big picture in construction, uh, we are still within the calendar timeline. And what I mean by that is that the goal here is completion of the last week of January, January thirty-first, which still gives us a two-month window, uh, for punch list, for any taper corrections that need to be made. So, and it's clear, clearly, uh, ahead of the grant deadline, which is March, uh, thirty-first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Director Yanez, so as far as the, the March thirty-first deadline, um, is that? What gets us to that? Is that an occupancy permit or, uh, a statement of, of occupancy? Or we have to be operational or, if you know, uh?
No, great question, sir. Uh, basically, we have to be at a certain percentile of, of the money spent.
That's easy.
The, the occupancy will, will come, say, around, oh, early June, late May, sir.
Okay. Late May, you said is the occupancy.
That's right, sir.
Late May, you said is the.
Late May, early June for certificate of occupancy, yes, sir.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, all good information and thank you for the update. I'm kind of curious why Vertex doesn't have a representative here.
Also a very good question, sir. Uh, due to scheduling conflicts, they were unable to. I did speak to them about it this afternoon during our construction meeting. Uh, they are very much able to be here at our next city council meeting, if you like.
We were told that they would be coming to our meetings on a regular basis.
That is correct, sir. And that's, uh, I brought that to their attention.
Okay.
And that is the response that I received this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Could you relay this back to them, please?
Definitely, yes, sir.
Great. Other questions? Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we are on to consent item. We have three items on consent. City Clerk, could you clea- please read the consent items by title only?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, first of the three is consideration of Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one, and that is approving certain demands. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one. The second consent item is consideration of award of contract for water treatment granul- granulated, uh, active carbon replacement. It is staff's recommendation that the city council award a contract in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents to Carbonus Inc. And, uh, lastly, consideration of support for Clean Power Alliance's fiscal year twenty-twenty-six community project funding request. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve letters of support for the Clean Power Alliance community project fund requests. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much. Um, any questions on consent item A? Consent item B? Consent item C? All right, um, the one note on consent item C is that, um, that letter needs to get off today for it to be relevant. So, um, we'll need, if, if it, if approved, we'll need to make sure we get it signed and to staff so that they can, uh, get us on the record on that. Um, all right, so if there are no questions on it, uh, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards for the items on the consent agenda?
None submitted, Mr. Mayor.
Great, bring it back for discussion. Um, any discussion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. Okay, um, we are at, uh, almost seven-thirty, seven-twenty. Do we want to continue on with the public hearing items or do people need to take a break? Power on, all right. So then our first public hearing, we have switched the order of those and we're going to do the semi-annual review. So, um, it looks like we ha- have.
Planning Director Lynn?
Yes, great.
Good evening, mayors and members of the council. The city council will be conducting a six-month review of the conditional use permit for the private rental events at Villa Del Sol. They're all located within the Alverno Heights Academy campus at two hundred North Mitchellinda Avenue. We will start with ex parte disclosure, if any. Seeing none. Um, we'll continue with the historic villa. The Villa Del Sol de Oro is located within the thirteen-acre site bounded by low-density residential developments to the north. It's Grandview Avenue, Highland Avenue to the south, Mitchellinda Avenue to the west, and Wilson Street to the east. Last year, October, the city council held public hearing, amended the conditions of approval for the conditional use permit, allowing twenty private rental events per calendar year at the villa, starting year twenty-twenty-five. And directed staff to return to the city council within six months for another review. This provides the flexibility to adjust the numbers of event allowed during the review contingent upon the performance demonstrated by Alverno Heights Academy. There are also additional conditions that were addressed in that meeting for the academy to mitigate the noise from the sound created by the metal plates as vehicle exiting the Wilson Gate. There's also conditions elevens for city council to conduct annually review, um, thereafter. Academy is required to send out quarterly notices to all residents, including property owners and renters within the three-hundred-foot radius. The academy also held, need to held annual neighbors' meetings. So on February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, Alverno Heights Academy Administration's Board of Trustees. So on February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, Alverno Heights Academy Administration's Board of Trustees, city staff, and six members of the community attended the annual neighbors' meeting at the Learning Technology Center on-site to discuss rental events held at the villa and filming on campus. The meeting minutes are included in the packet for your reference. Key topics that were discussed during the meetings are the M O U between Sierra Madre Police Department and Alverno Heights Academy is still in place. The presence of off-duty officers are monitoring all the special events on-site. The police chief addressed complaints that were brought to the meeting and confirmed that all noise readings were within compliance. The meeting also discussed topics that are not related to the villa, such as the removal of the temporary modular classrooms that happened last September, and also the construction status of the sports court. Um there's also landscaping improvement project along Highland Avenue that was well-received by the residents. Residents shared concerns regarding pedestrian noise, school traffic related to um drop-off and pickup. And there's also vehicle idling um before seven A.M. for the equipment noise that was associated with the school events. And in response, Alverno is committed to work close closely with their vendors to ensure compliance to the operational guideline. And when there's activity fall out of the conditions of approval, they will be um directing the vendors to apply for appropriate permit with the city. Alverno also emphasized that the neighbors are encouraged to contact the facility director on-site for any immediate concern, as they are pre-present on-site during school events and can be respond promptly. Staff is also working on the noise ordinance update, and we will bring a draft of the noise ordinance update to the planning commission at the following um upcoming meeting. And any noise ordinance updates that are contemplated, and those standards will be applied to any school and institutional sites. So any standards and that city adopts um will likely affect Alverno.
I have a question on that. Would would that be only if it's more restrictive?
Yes.
So if it's not more restrictive, uh because there's a master plan, it would or uh I'm sorry, a C U P, it would say the same?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, um Alverno also let the residents know that they will be asking the city council to instate the twenty-six rental event for the villa, due to the age of the villa and the maintenance and repair that is required for the villa. And I will turn it over to Chief Bariantos for the um event monitoring reports and also calls for services.
Can I ask you a quick question before we do that, just so I'm clear? This is for the C U P for the villa, not involving the school and what happens with the school, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
This is just for the villas.
Okay, and in our C U P, on five twenty-eight, twenty-four in our meeting, I thought we reduced it to thirteen events. And then upon our approval tonight, would increase it back to the other number. I have thirteen, not twenty.
That's correct. So the thirteen events is for year twenty um well, twenty-twenty-five, that was a- approved, but it was amended to twenty.
Yeah, it came back.
Got it.
Yeah, I saw the same thing. It's it's-
Got it, thank you.
All right. Chief Bariantos.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. So uh I'm gonna provide you an assessment of uh the Alverno Heights Academy Villa del Sol. So since October fifth of twenty-twenty-four, up to March twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-five, they have held eleven events in total. Of the eleven events, um we have received complaints in five of the eleven events, which totaled out to seven calls for service, meaning they called our dispatch center directly, and seven calls to security. However, of the seven calls to security, four were from our dispatch. So therefore, seven calls for service and three directly to security. The events that we had calls for service was October twelfth. We had uh two to dispatch, three to security. Of those three, two are the same from the um from the calls from dispatch. So dispatch followed up and called uh security on November second. There's also a one-in-one marked um that one on November second. It's actually one call for service, one to security, but the call from security was from our dispatch center. November sixteen, one was called directly to security, no calls for service to our dispatch. March twenty-second, we also had one call for service to dispatch, which is the same and one to security, meaning our dispatch center called security to inform them their music was too loud. And then the one where we had the greatest calls, besides October twelfth, it's March twenty-ninth. We had three calls for service back-to-back here at our dispatch center, and then one directly to security. Uh and based on my analysis, you have a couple of 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 complaints for the base being too high. And the others mostly are when they are the guests yelling, when the bride and groom are walking in. That's what most of the uh uh multiple complaints are from. And that uh concludes the uh total amount of-
What were the 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 events?
So most, I I would have to refer to or or to um-
The report says all eleven were weddings.
I would think-
Okay.
Wedding baptisms, yes. They're all weddings?
I don't know. The report that we have says all eleven events were weddings.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question?
Yes, please.
And I think up there I had four hundred and seventy-eight decibel readings in total out of the eleven events, which is an average of about forty-five per event, and none are over the seventy decibel.
That's what I was gonna ask. So when there were calls to for service relating to noise, um if I remember correctly, that then prompts a a reading, or you know, roughly speaking, or or at least there's a reference to the noise level around or about the time of the call? Is that what you've listed in this?
That is correct. That is what have I what I've listed in the uh in the parentheses. However, we weren't unable to get a reading when they greeted the groom, because it was over before.
Understood.
But still, I'm 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 sure it bothered. I I could see why.
Yes, understood. Thank you.
Councilor Gus?
So I'm looking at the event gate closed column. That's correct. That's there's only one time where it didn't close at ten and it only was seven minutes late.
That is correct, and-
Significant change.
That, I I believe during our meeting, our our community meeting that we last had, I believe a um I think it was you, right, that closed the gate. It was an employee that rolled out the gate late, seven minutes after.
This, I don't know if this is a question, but I thought we were not tracking when necessarily the gate was closed from um staff, but when the last car was out of a visitor. I thought that's what we decided was more important.
Well, also-
Well, this is, you know.
So-
Also uh ser- service providers.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then can you remind me again also, did we uh say the doors had to be open or shut, the windows, sorry?
They have to be shut.
Okay, thank you.
And the uh off-duty officers are monitoring throughout.
Sorry for the questions, it's-
Chief?
I don't remember.
Thank you for the report. Um so I just wanna make sure, when we're looking at the highest D B rating, I noticed in your in your report from October forward, there's two readings, and I'm assuming one's interior, one's exterior. Is that is that what we're seeing there?
Thank you for the question, yes. That is what you're seeing. Interior, you're gonna have the higher reading. Exterior, you're gonna have the lower reading.
Okay, thank you. And um within the the public comment, we got a lot of complaints about garbage and beer bottles and trash. And I I drive down Grandview, or from Grandview down, I make that turn, that dangerous turn, every morning taking my kids to school. Um but that's during the week. So have you have you noticed a lot more litter or trash along Mitchellinda? Cause that's one of the complaints we saw frequent in the public comment.
Thanks for the question, but I have not received any complaints regarding trash. Um what I mostly receive complaints is traffic when they're picking up or dropping off.
That that was another complaint, but I mean, we're specific to, we're specific to the villa events that we're we're talking about.
We have not received any directly to our dispatch center, no.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
I think we turn it back to Director Lynn.
Yes, so this evening, the city council may conduct the annual review for the conditional use permit twenty-two oh-three and um or direct staff to amend the conditional of approval for the C U P or direct staff to schedule a public hearing to consider revocation of the conditional use permit.
Great.
That concludes my report. And Alverno um are here. If you'd like to um invite them to the podium.
I have a question before we do that.
Yes, please, Councilor Gus.
Um in terms of process, um I noticed that the the recommended or the alternatives include a scheduling of a a public hearing to consider revocation. Does that by i- by negative implication mean that if we were to amend the conditions of approval for the C U P, that could happen this evening and would not require a second schedule, and that would be with respect to any of the conditions?
Um that's correct, the city.
Can you can you remind me, was this notice as a public hearing item? It was.
Notice as a public hearing.
Oh, yes, it could happen today.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Uh yeah, we'll have Mr. Farsing come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and staff. I'm Ken Farsing. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees for Alverno Heights Academy. I did wanna basically um apologize that Joanne Harabedian, our head of school, couldn't be here tonight. She got ill over the weekend, and she's not um been over to the school, um so she asked tonight that I do the presentation. And just like the gentleman who got up at public comment, I I wanna thank the city of Sierra Madre and your staff for assistance during the Eaton fire. Um fortunately, the fire didn't get down to our campus, you know, into our tree canopy or any of our buildings. And we did have smoke damage, those type of things. And the city staff assisted with cleaning up around the campus, all the streets, did a great job, and then we concentrated on cleaning up the campus and the buildings. And also, um we were happy to uh allow first responders onto the campus for a staging area. That's something we feel is part of our community service. Now, we also recognize that this has been an unusually busy time for the city, and Alverno Alverno appreciates consideration by the council of our request to restore the six events for a total of twenty-six annual events. We also appreciate the efforts of the city staff and the police department to refine the event monitoring program. We believe the monitoring program is working, and the events have complied with the conditions of approval. Now, the financial need for the funds to address the villa's operation and restoration cost has not changed since the school reported to you in October of last year. Our request to restore to twenty-six total annual events is critically important. Filming, as you know, has been declining. It used to be a revi- pretty good revenue source for the city. Um and it's basically not coming back in in, you know, it's just not a reliable source of revenue right now. And during the last six months, there's been no filming at the villa, and there's no filming that's currently scheduled. And as the staff report points out, the villa has unexpected and unplanned expenses. Alverno and the villa have faced additional expenses from the impact of the Eaton fire. And what I did wanna comment, um Claire had mixed a few things. You know, we had our neighbor meeting, and basically we we met on the master plan and the villa, so it was a bit confusing at times. And some of those items the neighbors would bring up were related to the school master plan. A good example is the idling at seven in the morning. That was during our Christmas, unfortunately, it was during the Christmas program that we had. It was a company that did the snow. They made snow for the kids. And it wa- it was an issue. We didn't want them there that early, and we're not gonna use that vendor in the future. But they were out on Mitchellinda, and you know, they're running the refrigeration or whatever on the truck. And we did get a complaint uh from the neighbors on Mitchellinda, and I would have complained if I lived there too. And uh I think it's been clarified, the gate closing was Andrea leaving. The reason that was brought up is there was actually a noise complaint that was called in uh from a a neighbor at, I think it was seven, you know, seven minutes after ten, they called in, and it turned out it was um Andrea leaving. She's now leaving from Wilson, so she doesn't leave from Mitchellinda. So um we really believe there's been significant progress um to address the concern of the neighbors. The independent event monitors, along with Alverno's staff and our private security, have effectively managed the events. The restoration of six events will assist in supporting the operation and restoration of what we believe is irreplaceable Sierra Madre historic resource. It does bring people into your town. It was interesting, you're talking about your downtown and economic development. You know, it does bring eye eyeballs um and advertising to Sierra Madre. Now, I would be happy to answer any questions and provide additional information. Andrea's here tonight. Also, um Rich Martinez, who's our uh assistant head of school, Rich is here too. There were some comments about basketballs and, you know, we're we're going to the planning commission in a month, so if we wanna talk about basketballs, we can we can do that in a month at the planning commission. So I I understand, you know, these are issues. And we're happy to work with the neighbors on them and with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um why don't you stay up there for a minute in case we've got any questions from Council uh questions?
Okay, I do have one, actually.
Please.
So one of the things we we talked about, and I think it was mentioned in the report, was um that that the school in the villa was gonna explore uh noise reduction mechanisms for the gate, um around, you know, the cables and the metal plate. And I I didn't hear any update on that as part of this report. I wondered if you could speak to that or-
Yeah, we did. We did change the cables out. Um we, that's the one on Mitchellinda. My understanding was it was the gate on Mitchellinda had just a regular chain on it, and it would rattle when we locked it, so we bought a special chain that was rubber coated. And we're, the um the plate um basically is on Wilson, and it's basically, we've been putting pads over it right now. We're trying to repair it, but I think the noise reduction has gone down. We we're directing cars away from the plate right now, but we're working on getting it repaired.
Thank you.
Great. Other questions?
Uh I I had a question for you. So who is your your person that that um is responsible for knowing all the terms of of the um C U P, all of the parts of it?
Yes, Andrea?
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want Andrea to come up? Yeah, if 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 you wouldn't mind. So um if we do go forward um and increase from twenty to twenty-six, um can you walk through what the the requirements are in the 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 uh level of use that that is required as a part of the permit?
Um the overall permit right now, as-
For for events?
Yeah, as it stands, as it's twenty events. Nobody can come in before eight A.M. Um rentals the day before cannot stay later than six P.M. Um there's three months out of the year that can only hold three events. That's July, August, and December. Um catering trucks are required to use Mitchellinda unless, you know, something, there's a little dip that some of the trucks can't hit. But for the most part, they all go out there. Um we alternate gates. Gates on Wilson open at eight, and then Mitchellinda and Highland gates are open by staff or security, whoever arrives first on the property.
And maximum number of people for events?
Two hundred is our maximum occupancy. Uh no alcohol served at the last hour, so right now it's eight-thirty, because nine-thirty is the end of our event. Music is shut off at nine-thirty. Doors and windows remain shut. Um there's still no air conditioning. There's still no live bands. String instruments are allowed during the wedding ceremony. And then also the reception, the cocktail hour, but they have to be stringed, no amplification. Microphones can only be used for wedding vows, toast, um general safety announcements, things like that, exiting. Our our signs are posted. Our, our signs are posted at the bar about living in the neighborhood, exiting quietly. Um, where Uber and Lyft should pick up, ride share programs. Things of that nature. Anything else?
No, that's, that's what I wanted to hear. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Anything else for Andrea? Alright. Alright, so this is a public hearing, so we have the opportunity to open up for public comment. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards for people in the room and have we received any via email?
Uh, yes, on both, Mr. Mayor. The city clerk's office received public comment from nine individuals. And those comments were forwarded to the city council. We do have a number of, of speaker cards. The first is from Mr. Farsing, but I'm not sure if he, okay, he's waving. Um, and so the next speaker card is from Carolyn Halpern.
Hello, my name is, good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Halpern. I live on Michelinda. I've lived in my home since nineteen fifty-six, across the street from Alverno. I want to thank you first of all for recognizing my very dear friend, Lisa Spagai, in her passing. She was a beautiful person. She was the soul of Sierra Madre Elementary School. I had the pleasure of working with her and having her as my great friend. So thank you for very, very much for doing that. Um, I wanted to say that there's some omissions represent, misrepresentations and just some incorrect information that's been turned into you as well as what I heard tonight. So I wanted to sort of set the record straight. Um, I attended that meeting on twelve, on, I'm sorry, two twenty-seven. And none of the requests that I made were included in what you heard tonight or in Ms. Lynn's report. Um, and my, my concerns were basically about the villa and the noise. So I wanted to start off by saying that I have found many violations of the code. Um, I was there the evening of October twelfth. I was at my friend's home. She was across the street from the Alverno gates, Chui Chow, and we heard at nine fifty, a lot of noise. We went outside. Lots of light, blinding light coming from the light into her house. Um, and we were standing out there and cars were coming out, nine thirty and such. A lot of noise in the parking lot area, people screaming, having a good time, I guess. And then we saw that no one was locking the gate at ten o'clock. So at ten o'five, according to my own records, and by the way, Chui Chow was there and also Mark Fleishman, who's here, we all saw the gate not locked to ten o'clock. And I know that you asked about people coming out. People were still coming out after ten o'clock. And these were not vendors, these were not security, these were actual party goers. So I called the Sierra Madre Police at ten oh five and I said, look, nobody's here, nobody's locking the gate. And the lady said, just be, um, just be patient, someone's going to come and lock the gate soon. At around ten ten, someone came to lock the gate. Um, and people were still waiting to come out and they were leaving. Um, and I noticed too, that in the event checklist that they have for that night, the gentleman didn't write that he closed the gate at ten ten. He wrote that he closed it at ten o'clock. And I find that rather confusing because I, Mark told me not to, but I kind of screamed at the guy across the street. I said, hey, gate's not closed, it's after ten o'clock. And he said, yeah, right? And so I, I kind of questioned the fact that, you know, he would have this log and that he would still write ten o'clock down when he knows people saw him not close the gate till ten ten. So that was one evening where I did see a lot of people coming out. The gate was not locked at ten ten. Um, you have another ten oh, ten oh seven, I believe. And we made this really clear in planning. We actually wanted to close the gate at nine thirty. And, um, Alverno balked about it and wanted to have till ten o'clock. So in my view, ten o'clock, this has been going on for quite a while now. It shouldn't be ten oh one, it shouldn't be ten oh three, it shouldn't even be ten oh seven. It should be ten o'clock. And we live on the Pasadena side here. And this is the Michelinda exit. And I don't know why, but the, um, the neighbors that you're affecting are the Pasadena residents from all of this. So I don't know why Pasadena, I mean, the Michelinda exit is the only one that's to be used for the party goers. I would like to see that changed. I don't know if that's something that you do or the Planning Commission does, but I think that we've taken the bullet-
Ms. Halpern, could you wrap up your comments?
Long enough. Pardon me?
Could you wrap up your comments?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Um, so there's about a ton of violations that are on there. They're in a letter that I wrote to you that were sixteen pages long. Um, a lot of them have to do with the traffic and the lo- and the loud noises coming from the school. And I just have to show you one thing. And oh, by the way, there were seven actual calls for, um, for noise, not the four or five that were mentioned. Um, this is really disturbing to me because I think that you can remember this night. I do. It's in, it'll be actually in my mind. And this is on January the seventh. So why, in all things holy?
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Yeah, I'm going to. Would Alverno put torches out on January twenty-fifth for an event? Honestly. They don't care about their neighbors, they only care about themselves. Please don't give them any more than the twenty you already have given them. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the final speaker card that I have as of now is from Mark Fleishman.
Hello, thanks for having this open forum to talk. Uh, I want to back up everything that Carolyn said because I'm a witness. And I want you to know that Alverno has not been a good neighbor. This has been going on for years, years now. I know that you all know about that too. Uh, how many chances should they be given? I am, oftentimes, I have to go to sleep on the early side because I rise early for, for my business that I have. And oftentimes, I am greatly disturbed by the amount of ruckus that is coming from across the street. It's very disturbing, uh, trying to get enough rest. Um, also, in my recollections of the history of all of this, Alverno has been disingenuous on a number of occasions. And they have been caught numerous times. Uh, I'm not going to use up my entire time, but I am going to ask you, don't give them any more chances. Don't give them any more events to be able to abuse the neighbors that are around them. These are, this is, uh, these are our homes where we have the right to the peaceful and quiet enjoyment of our homes. And quite honestly, Alverno doesn't care. Not at all. So they are not good neighbors and they don't deserve consideration for what they are asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleishman.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we have no other speaker cards.
Alright, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, bring it back discussion.
Um, can I make this request again? I made it in October. Can we please change part of the, um, reporting document? It says in two point two, two point two point five, event monitor, A, uh, AHA representative and security guards are exempt from these time restrictions. All event guests shall depart by ten PM. So I think we should mostly be reporting when the last guest leaves, not when necessarily the gate is locked. Cause it's, it's not part of the CP, CUP exempt.
Councilmember, you said two point two point five is what I heard?
I think it is.
You have a two point two point four is the?
Four, the event cleanup shall be no later than ten thirty.
Is that, is that the section here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I cut and pasted it. So let me find it.
Ten thirty, cause I have ten?
Go to two point oh in time of use.
Yeah, so it's a two point two point four I have and the version that was, uh, rev- uh, was the ten twenty-four one is that, uh, that only the event monitor, AHA representative and security guards shall remain on campus past ten PM and are exempted from these time restrictions.
And you're, so just to get it right, your request is not about gate closure? It's instead about who's going to be on?
Guest is departed. So the emphasis, like on some of our charts, is, is when the, when the events closed and the gates closed. But in actuality, that part is exempt.
It's not where you want it.
The relevant part is when is the last guest gone?
Other thoughts and comments from Councilmember Krebs? Looks like you have something.
Yeah, just on that point. I mean, if the event monitor is recording the gate closure, is the implication of that, and I, I guess maybe it's just a question for the chief, is the implication of that at, at that, at that gate closure, that even the monitor, the H, the, the rep- the school representative and the school guards, the security guards have left? Is that, I mean, if the gates close, that means everyone has left? Or I, I just want to make sure I'm interpreting that right? Cause I mean, it seems to me then, then the case is that everyone is gone for the, for the most part.
Thank you for the question. So if you look at the, well, I don't think you have, um, before you an event monitor checklist?
We do.
You do? So it documents event end time?
It's in the report.
So when the event ended, number of parking attendants, and then final gate closing?
So is it your interpretation that if, if the, if the checklist lists ten PM as the final gate closing, the implication of that is that everyone is gone, including, including the event monitor, the security and the, the school representative?
That's the way we interpret it, yes. However, there has been times where the gates close, let's say Andrea, like in that incident, leaves through another gate or leaves through that same gate after the fact, yes.
Councilmember Krebs, uh, because the October twelfth date was, was brought up, on that event monitor checklist, it said, uh, the gate closing time was ten, yet the event monitor departure time was ten oh eight.
Yeah, okay. I didn't look at the individual reports. Um.
But most of them kind of align. When the gate closes, that's when the monitor leaves, but some of them, there's a little discrepancy.
And here it says time, time last guest left, which is the important part.
Well, yeah, so, so that's actually my, my question is, is there's, there seems to be a mismatch between, um, attachment B, which has, as Councilmember Lowe said, um, time music started, time music stopped, last guest left, last gate closed. And there's all of that, but then the actual monitoring forms have a different format and a different, the checklist is different. Can, can you help me understand why those are different?
Okay.
Director Lynn, question?
Uh, I, I can actually answer that, cause I helped draft that.
Okay.
At the time, I believe we were using gate closure as a proxy for people leaving. Uh, and then I believe this line about last, time last guest left was added in response to, to Councilmember Lowe's request at the last meeting. So this, if I'm not mistaken, this, this provision about time last guest left is new.
It was in the March seventh, two thousand twenty-four?
It was.
Yes. First Amendment to Condition Use Permit twenty-two dash zero three, March seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
So does it, does, does that, does time last guest left?
It says all event guests depart by ten PM. Event cleanup shall end no later than ten thirty PM. Event, and this was, this, this is the March seventh version.
Yeah.
Event monitor, representative and security guards are exempt from these time restrictions.
Would, would, would that field address two point two point four? Because who else is going to be, I guess maybe the, the people serving meals or the contractors they brought to the site? Could I, I guess would, I'm trying to think if the field time last guest left would address the condition in two point two point four, that all three?
Let me take a second. Let me ask a question that, that may help clarify that. So Chief, how, so this, um, departure time and event end time and gate close time, tell me how this is that working operational, operationally? Tell me where the person is, tell me what they're doing, like, like what are they doing as, as we approach ten PM? The, this monitoring person, Pierre, I, I can't quite read his last name, Suparata?
Suparata, yes.
Okay.
So I, I think we have to speak to Andrea a little more in regards to that matter. I have not worked side by side with them. Um, however, I would expect them to monitor the gate to ensure that it gets closed at the prompt time. Um, however, all guests have to be out by that ten PM.
Right.
Mark. Now, what guests are doing out in a public street, I think that's where it changes. Um, if they hang out or they're waiting for an Uber, a Lyft, um, that could obviously change things. But, um, it's my understanding that they close the gate and all guests are out by that time.
Who closes the gate? This, their, their school?
Uh, the monitor with.
Monitor, the monitor does it?
With, yes.
Could, could?
I'm just, I'm going to go ahead. I think, same question as you. No, no, please finish what you were saying, cause this, and this is a slightly different topic.
Okay, yeah, i- i- if we could get Ms. Bertolini up to just explain, like, I, I just want to try to figure out like where is this?
Well, then what is our police officer doing?
This is what I'm asking.
Well, he would know what our officers are supposed to be doing, right?
No, he's not there.
But there are, there are Sierra Madre Police Officers, correct?
Private.
Off duty.
Thanks for the question.
Correct?
Yes, we are present there to the very last minute.
Thank you.
Yes, we are.
Good question. You're supposed to be there to the last minute.
I understand, but I, I want, I want to try to understand. If you could talk to me, Ms. Bertolini, like how the, the operation works is like, what, like what are they doing? I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around a little bit more specifics.
Sure, so approximately nine thirty, sometimes the weddings end earlier. Um, the three of us are outside. I'm usually posted up by the front door, reminding everybody to be quiet, ride share. The event monitor is, if you know our campus, north of the villa door where he can see the gate and he can see the guest. Because he can also see the back door of the villa where the vendors are packing up. He's already walked through to make sure that all the vendors are aware they're off property by ten. It's usually the DJ that is the last one. But so then he can see that no one's still in the building when I tell him the building is empty. He can't do a walkthrough until he knows all the guests are off of Michelinda. So kind of by where the top of our playground is, where he can see everything, that's where it's taking place. Now, if there's ride share, our security officer has to stay up there with them because we want eyes on them. Um, we don't have an answer from anybody to put them out on the street or not. We make sure they are out on the street. They, we make sure that it's one of us is sitting there watching them. But the gate is closed at ten when, you know, by ten, after all guests and vendors are left. Um, at that point, once it's locked, the event monitor walks through the building to make sure. We go into the cafeteria where all of the equipment is, sound readings, vest, um, the documentary reading and of course, the CUP is everywhere. And he literally says, how long is it going to take you to get to your car? And I say, uh, okay, give me seven, I say, give me four minutes and he'll write down something. Um, we have now, since the neighbor meeting, instructed that no one will leave through the Michelinda once it is locked. It is absolutely locked. And that we are all, the three of us, will be exiting through Wilson.
And the three of you are you?
Security guard and the event monitor. Um, and then I take a picture of the paper. He takes it and I believe he drops it off here.
Great. Alright.
Yes. Um, so Councilmember Lowe, I think one of the struggles we had, or struggles I had as, as author of this checklist was converting the condition into some kind of checklist field. And gi- given what, uh, Ms. Bertolini said, if we change that field to read time last guest and vendors left, I think would maybe translate into what that condition is trying to achieve. Okay, so we, we can make that edit going forward. And I believe the gate closure one, well, this is what I'm recalling, uh, is just a legacy, uh, condition because before, I think we were regulating gla- gate closure times. And so that was, that remained in there. If you'd like, we can strike it or you can keep that information in there. Cause we're not regulating gate closure times, I think anymore.
Exempt from that. I, I, I like that it's in there just to show it's signed off at a certain time, I guess by the event monitor. I guess that would be good enough because if our event monitor and the personnel and the security guard are all signed off, uh, it says the time here, event monitor departure time, it should be accurate. It should say ten oh seven, which is fine, cause it's exempt for that time. But I, I guess in our reports to, to council and to, if, once it goes back to Planning Commission, then it shouldn't be one of the logged items that whether they broke up, they violated or not, because it's, they're exempt from that part of it. If that makes sense.
Um, so my, my point is that we're talking about this event monitor checklist, that's an attachment, you know, and that's what I think you're looking at. That doesn't actually match what's being filled out. So that's, that's, that's the other sort of confusing thing, is that, that the checklist that we're talking about and then you're talking about updating is not what's being filled out. And what's being filled out actually has more information and, and has good, you know, good information, but doesn't actually include any of the things that we're talking about. So, so I guess that, that, that's also a disconnect. Um, and, and again, I don't, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't need a history on why that might be. But I, you know, to the extent that we think these things that we're talking about are important, then they probably need to go on the form that's actually being filled out versus the form that's the, that, that's an attachment to the report.
There, there are, there were different versions of the event monitor checklist. There, there are, there were different versions of the event monitor checklist, and what's being reflected here are some of the older versions that were created.
But it seems like all of the ones that we have in our.
Yeah, I don't see a single form filled out of the version that you submitted.
So I guess that what I'm hearing, and, and I, I think I've got a, a consensus here, is, is that we all like to have one form that's the same between what is in the, the attachment and what is actually being used.
I think it's just missing something. Oh, I get you. You're right, you're right. It is different.
No, it's totally different.
Yeah, you're right.
Which, I mean, it's, again, I mean, it still has good information, it just doesn't have all of the information. To the extent that we're taking time to make them match the conditions, then they should be using the, the form. And if, if this form is better, then we should just, you know, then it, this should just be updated to include all of the things that we need.
Yeah, agreed.
This is all sort of technical stuff.
Right, right. It, I think, I think the message is, what I'm hearing is, is that the two should agree, right? Is that whatever we have is, a, a, as what is the, the draft form, or what is the, the, uh, attachment form that should be in there, and what is actually completed should be the, should, look, should be the same.
I actually don't care what the attached form is. I actually just want that the, the form that they're using to have the, the right conditions from the, from the, from the CUP. I don't think we, I mean, I, I, this is a common problem, right? The thing that's attached doesn't match what's actually done, and so having two versions isn't necessarily all that helpful. But the version that's actually being used is the one that should match what the, have all the information that's required to, to satisfy compliance with this, with the conditions on the CUP.
Fair enough. Thank you for the clarification.
I think though the new, the newer version that's not being used actually follows the CUP.
Right, no, but I, but if this is a more user-friendly form, and it has like, it has, you know, boxes for different, yeah, exactly. I think it just needs to be updated to allow for the additional conditions.
Includes traffic, parking, lights.
So, so, so maybe if we move from the form more to the conditions, and more kind of like, what, what, what we're being asked for tonight is, is that we're, we're here to, to hear whether or not we're gonna stay at twenty or go up to, uh, twenty-six, is that right? Yeah, it's twenty-six.
Can I take a more, a less controversial point first?
Please.
Can we discuss whether or not we wanna conduct these reviews going forward? In what, in what time increment? I think we've now, I think after this six month, I think the next one is meant to be annual. And whether we, we wanna continue that, and also whether we want them to be conducted here or with planning? I feel like that's less controversial, cause I would, I would propose it remain annual, and I would propose that it go back to planning.
And that, that was our discussion last time around. Um, the hope was, we're, we're gonna take this one. Uh, because we're the ones that put the six month condition on. And I, yeah, that was, that was definitely our, our, our decision, was it to go back to the, to the planning commission and to be annual.
An annual as of this date? Well, I mean, well, the, the difference is, is that do we, do we put it back in October, or do we do it here? Does it matter?
I feel like this planning, I mean, the planning calendar is, is what it is, and so I just feel like if they can, you know, if you have one each calendar year, I think that's probably sufficient. I mean, I'll let Claire, our planning director Lynn and staff manage the timing.
All right, so we've taken care of the, the less controversial one. I, I've heard that, that we're gonna do it annually and go back to the planning commission, yes.
Is your question that, well, if this all gets approved and sent back, that planning will see this in October? Is that?
I was, I was just seeing, is, is it annual, is it annual as of, cause they did it in October in the past. I, I, I have no, I'm just trying to make sure we're clear and give clear direction to staff. I think councilmember Crebs said it the right ways, is that we let, we give it to staff and say, it's gotta be done at least annual, fit it in the calendar.
I, I feel like it should go back in October, because, and then continue thereafter, because we're the ones that kind of carved out the six month period.
Okay.
That's just, that's the way I feel, but.
Did they have it at last October?
We did.
We did.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, that's why I asked, that's what I thought.
Before that, no, March before that.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, so, so it, it, are we in agreement that, that, does anybody have a strong feeling about when in, in this, the next, okay?
Probably up to them too, as you said.
May I ask, uh, planning director Lynn to come up, just to make sure October is, is okay for them?
Yes, it, it's a great question, thank you.
Thank you for the question. So October will work for planning commission? Um, it's just, the next review will be a six month review, or do you prefer a eighteen month review?
Six months.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and that will require an amendment to section eleven, which I've noted here.
Okay, it's just the one time, right?
It, it'll be striking the line that reads, the city council will conduct a public hearing within six months of the effective date of this conditional use permit and annually thereafter.
Okay.
Strike that.
Got it.
It, well, won't it, it won't, it'll be stricken, or it'll be changed to planning commission?
It, it already, the rest of the paragraph already contemplates the city council or planning commission con- reviewing this in October annually.
Oh, okay.
Is how it's written currently.
Uh, thank you.
That line was in addition.
Great, all right. So twenty or twenty-six?
Well, I'll start.
Thank you.
I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, okay, we, we asked for measurable outcomes. How else can we do anything even close to objective if we, if, if we didn't ask for measurable outcomes? And I'm seeing some, some, some measurable outcomes. And one of the things I, what struck me was that, yeah, there's no filming anymore. When we first got involved with this whole issue, that was a huge issue for the neighbors. It was pretty much all we heard about. That's not even an issue now. Uh, no Sunday religious events. Uh, again, an issue, a non-issue now. Four hundred and seventy-eight decibel readings, not a single one was over seventy. All I can say is they're meeting the objectival, the measurable, objective standards that are set out. Whether that standard is a good standard or a bad standard, I don't know, but it's the one we're using, okay? Eleven events, one that we're told through objective measurement was beyond ten o'clock by seven minutes. I accept Ms. Alpern's testimony, I'll grant that, so that's two, and that was ten minutes. So I, I just don't see that as egregious. I don't see that as anything compared to the kinds of behaviors that we first had to contend with and set our conditions on behalf of. Um, so I don't see why we would penalize Alverno any further. Um, I, I just don't see that this, the behavior that we see, that we've, we've been presented by measurable outcomes, seems like they have earned their twenty-six events. That's, that's my take on it.
Can I pressure test one point?
Yep, yes, you may.
So the filming, I, I agree with you, and I'm, and I've said this many, many times, that part of the problem with all of this process is it's chopped up into little pieces, and we constantly hear from the residents that they don't care what bucket the events fit into, that's just a cumulative effect. And so I do appreciate the point that the filming has, you know, as, as been said, the filming has, has ceased or certainly meaningfully reduced. But that's just circumstance. There's no limit on that. So to the extent that we change usage here, and filming comes drawing back, which, you know, I'll admit, it seems unlikely, given the economic circumstances, but we have no control over that. And we've put, the limits that we have on that are separate and apart from this. And so I guess I'm just saying, I'm a little uncomfortable basing a decision to increase this on the assumption that filming activity will remain at close to zero, because we have no control over that, and that is sort of independently measured and, and, and governed. And so that, that would, that would be my only point. And, and I guess my other, well, I, I can go my other question in a minute, but yes, thank, that's my response.
My, my, my reaction to that is, I accept that completely. I, I, I do believe that Mr. Farsing is probably correct about, uh, the potentiality of future filming events. There's all kinds of discussion about that, um, here in Los Angeles area. Uh, but who has a crystal ball? So maybe some come back, but they're still gonna have to meet these standards. Ten o'clock closing gate standard, decibel reading standard. So I don't know why we'd assume that their behavior with those would be any different than their behavior with weddings. Why should we make that assumption based on this? So, so I, I'm not making my judgment based on the, uh, filming issue. I just thought it was kind of a, look, we're, we're concerned about the neighbors, right? We are, we all are. And I, when we first heard about this, I was really kind of appalled, and I think we all were. And I think we've come a long way for the neighbors. But at some point in time, we have to, there has to be some kind of line we can draw that's, that uses some kind of objective measurements, where it's not he says, she said. And, um, anyway, that's my view.
I'll, I'll add to that, you know, so we've got the standards, we've looked at, at, at directly here, that were in the report, um, that were in the staff report, and then there's the, you know, the other objectives that we've got, that Ms. Bertolini was able to go out. Is, it is, you know, the, the number of events that are limited by month, and the number of people that are limited. I mean, they, they, there was one of the issues we had in the past was, is that I, I didn't feel that they fully understood the terms of, of their CUP. And, you know, I'm looking at the CUP, and I'm hearing every item of the CUP that, that is requirement as a part of it, that it's, it's clear that they understand it. We're gonna see this again before planning in six months, make sure that, that, you know, they're meeting tho- those requirements, so.
Yeah, I, again, I echo especially what, what councilmember Goss was saying. We, we hear the residents, we hear our residents, um, we hear our neighbors' residents in Pasadena. Um, obviously very important, that's why we're going through this process. But, um, to go back to councilmember Goss's point, six months ago, we said, we are looking at objective standards, and if we see that those objective standards are met, we will probably, uh, take it back up to twenty-six. With, with the knowledge that, uh, six months after, which I'm pushing for, that the annual review is gonna be in front of the planning commission once again. And that annual review will happen annually, and these objective standards can be refined, uh, if they need to. Um, but annually, they will be, uh, they will be seen. So I, it's hard for me to go back on what we said six months ago, um, regarding these objective standards.
Great.
I'm in agreement. Um, when we set attainable goals, or we set, when we were making sure we're following the CUP to the language, and that's been met by the reports, um, I'm in agreement that we go back, we wouldn't go back on our word. Um, just historically, I'm looking at all the things we've done there in the past, and how there used to be more symbiotic relationship. And I'm hoping that at some point, with, and I think it is much less contentious. We're not here for five hours going through everything, and I think it's less contentious, I'm hoping so. Um, but I would have pulled our side of the agreement, where we said we would go to twenty-six if they met those measurements. And I hope we can go back to better relationships in our city. Because we used to hold a lot of events there, and they'd be out on the patio with a microphone for citizen of the year, weddings, and it's, it's too bad that it's disintegrated.
I'm gonna push back a little bit on the characterization of our meeting last time. I, I, and I presided over that meeting. I feel like I was very careful not to promise any outcome, that, that we would take this up in six months. And that, you know, that obviously, that the, you know, a conclusion could be drawn that if, if the standards were met, we would consider increasing it. I, I don't, I, I would, I would hesitate to characterize it as, you know, we promised an outcome. Um, so anyway, just, that's just a point of, point of, point of disagreement perhaps, in the interpretation of that meeting. And I, I guess my question from before, and I don't know, I mean, this obviously has a long history, and not everybody who's, you know, here tonight has been part of that long history. But does anybody have a sense, you know, I don't know if, if planning director Lynn has a sense from her experience or her predecessor's experience, where twenty-six comes from? I mean, we, we, we sort of, we have this notion of restoring twenty-six, but I just don't have a good sense of, like, what, what the twenty-six, I mean, I, I know it was probably in an original, uh, use permit, but like, on what basis was that number, sort of the pegged number?
It was, it was negotiated, if you remember, with, um, the, the attorneys for Alverno, I believe. And I think if I remember correctly, we took some kind of average of all the events that were, that had taken place there, and we cut it in half. So I think the high was like fifty at one point, and we cut it in half roughly, then we got twenty-six. Uh, and that was in the, the, the determinate for, determination for twenty-six, I believe, was, uh, negotiated during that one, two AM meeting.
Oh, with their attorneys in the other room?
Right.
And, I mean, we're at the point, twenty-six events, if we're assuming them are on weekend, means there's, there's one every other weekend. So just to put that out there.
No, because there's the month, as you pointed, as, as Ms. Bertolini pointed out, there's certain months where there is a limit. And so exactly, there are cer- certain number, of certain months where there can be every weekend.
Right, exactly. I, what I was trying to say was, is on average, and, and you're right, is that there are certain months where it's not. So those months, it's less, but that means that the rest of the year, it could be every single weekend. So I think that's worth kind of having out there as part of the discussion.
So ca- ca- councilmember Garcia points out that the two AM meeting was about the master plan and not about the villa. So then, so then those limitations wouldn't have been discussed at that meeting. I don't know if director Lynn remembers, um, whether that was negotiated, or that it was the average taken at the time, and then we cut it in half. That's what I'm remembering.
Cutting in half, if I remember, was the planning commission cutting the twenty-six to thirteen. That's, that's the cutting in half that I remember.
I think you're right.
And that, that's when it came to us, and we increased it from thirteen to twenty.
But originally, to get to the number, you, that's, that's what your question is, how, how did you originally get to the twenty-six?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, what I recall was, um, Alverno had, um, one CUP for all the event, and then all events was the temporary use event, and then they have one C, temporary use event to cover all the events. And then city attorney Greg Olson was correct that, um, we actually had, um, a list of all the events that were happening, and then they were negotiated with the, the attorney.
So maybe it wasn't at the two AM one, uh, it looks like, yeah. It, it looks like, um, Mr. Farsing may have a, please, Mr. Farsing. Okay.
All right, thank you. That, that, that's helpful, thank you.
Great. So are we still, with all the additional information, are we at the point, uh, of increasing, uh, from twenty? And if we're increasing from twenty, are we going to twenty-six, per their request?
Do I have to make a motion to that effect?
I, I, i- i- unless there's discussion, we can make a motion and vote on it.
You wanna discuss it more, I'll wait. I'll make a motion when you're ready.
I'm probably, I'll just be honest, I'm probably not going to support an increase. So, I mean, it, it may not matter, cause I'm hearing, I'm hearing.
Can you tell us more, why not support the increase? I, I wanna make sure we, we have that discussion.
I've, I, like I said, I disagree with sort of the, my, my takeaway from our prior meeting. Um, and I, and I've, again, wanted to understand sort of why the twenty-six comes from, and it sounds like it was a pure negotiated number, which, you know, makes me, makes me concerned, because there was a negotiation at that point, and there was probably some give and take. And so I, I do appreciate that at some point, that was, you know, an agreed, an agreed number. Um, you know, but I think we've kind of created arbitrariness here, right? Like, you know, the, the planning commission cut it in half, just as a, largely, I think, a punitive, a punitive, you know, punishment. And, you know, we restored it to twenty, because it seemed like a good round number, probably. You know, I mean, like, there wasn't any magic. So, I mean, I, I think a lot of this stuff is just kind of, you know, finger in the wind type stuff. And I, I just, I just feel like, you know, we've gotten to a good place, and, you know, we still have some folks that are, you know, in the neighborhood that are concerned. Not as, you know, hopefully, you know, others are, are less concerned, but I, I feel like we've gotten to a place that, that works. And I, I guess I'm just not trustful that, like, increasing it by, you know, a third, almost, or, you know, a little bit less, is, you know, I feel like we need some more time at this, at the stasis. That's just really sort of where I'm at.
You'd stay, you'd stay at the stasis. Is, is, is there a, a number less than twenty-six that would make you feel more comfortable?
I, I, like I said, this, the numbers seem completely arbitrary to me. To me, to me, it's all sort of just like messaging, right? Like, like I think, like, like I said, the, the planning commission was being punitive, we, we felt less punitive. And, you know, and now I think people are feeling like they're, you know, the, the, the punishment, quote unquote, should be lifted. But I'm just not convinced that twenty-six is some magic number, right? And so I, I just feel like this is, this is working, and, you know, why upend what's working? And, I mean, I, I mean, and like I said, I don't, we also don't need unanimity, so I mean.
No, I, I understand, but it, we, you know, the, the value is in the discussion from my perspective, and that's why I wanna hear it, so please, councilmember Garcia.
The only, the only reason that I would say it was worthwhile is because Mr. Farsing has testified that they need the revenue from those, those six more events. And we all know what the condition of the, of the facilities are, so I don't really have any reason to not believe that what he's saying is true. So then the real question is, do, you know, is, are we ready to, to, um, move forward from what was clearly punitive? Or do we need six more months of some kind of punitive measure to kind of solidify the whole thing? I'm ready to go tonight, but I, I understand where you're coming from.
I have the perspective, and you know how I said before, that I didn't agree, you know, with a higher number, because I felt like it wasn't being managed effectively enough to, to create a symbiotic relationship at all with, with the neighbors. With the less filming, if this next, if it goes to planning commission for the next update approval at six months, I highly doubt there's gonna be booking of a ton of more filming in between that, so I'm not worried that if. So I'm not worried that if we increase the number to twenty-six, that then we would have filming too and it's gonna be such a burden on the neighbors. I do feel that without the filming, moving back to twenty-six will bring up their income. And help keep those numbers down and, and the noise levels down, since there is no filming. I know they're independent contracts. I get that. But you still have to treat it the same in the sense that overall, how much nuisance is there gonna be? And I also appreciate that the Planning Commission is, even though we can't directly apply it to. The noise variance, at least we'll have more understanding of what our nor- noise ordinance will be, rather than just the seventy, you know. Level, decimal level. So I think with all of that said together, I, I understand the revenue cuts. With a lot of businesses right now. I mean, we've had a fire, we've had all kinds of things happening. And I'd rather encourage business than hinder it.
Councilmember Garcia, I'd like to hear from you. And I see, see Mayor Reynoso has something to say, but I'd like to hear from you first.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, you know, when thinking about the number, it was twenty-six with the Planning Commission. It was, before it came to us, right? Because it got cut to thirteen, it got cut in half. Um, so how they got to the twenty-six, I don't know. This was always in the purview of the Planning Commission before it came to us. Um, you know, I, this is a cherished building that resides in Sierra Madre. Um, I would hate to see it fall into disrepair, cause it is something that um, is historical to our, to our city. Um, we have been told that there is no co-mingling of funds between Alverno Heights Academy and the money that um, that supports. The villa per, uh, on its own. So this is the only method of support for the villa. Um, as far as reading through the monitor reports, which I'm hoping that tho- these are accurate. Because it is from a off-duty police officer from our city. Um, a lot of the complaints previously were. From a lot of other things rather than the send-off or the welcoming of the bride and groom. And I was reading, most, a lot of the complaints were, this was because there was a big cheer because the bride and groom were being sent off. And we were hearing more complaints about droning base and windows open and just lengthy uh, noise nuisances. And I'm not reading that in these, in these reports like I was seeing or hearing before. I'm not trying to ignore the public comment that we received via email because there was quite a few. Um, but I'm taking into account. Um, the word of what's within these monitor reports. And um, it seems as though. Um, a lot of what we were hearing before has been abated. And so that's why I'm comfortable, um, knowing that there's another six months. Uh, that the Planning Commission will hear this again, um, restoring it back to the twenty-six.
Thank you.
City Manager Reynoso, let's take.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe in, in, and maybe we can call Planning Director Lynn or, or, or Ken back. But I, I believe that the twenty-six events were negotiated and that was the minimum number of events that. They needed to be able to, to generate the, the revenue to maintain the villa. So I believe that number twenty-six. Is important to them for that reason. Uh, but I, I believe maybe uh, Planning Director Lynn or maybe Ken can expand if that was the reason. Why we settled on twenty-six.
Let's agree with Mr. Farsing, he can give us a, a read on that.
City Manager Reynoso's cor- corrected his um, recollection. Um, you know, I, I mean, I don't wanna. I don't wanna bore you with the details, but the, the villa's really expensive to maintain. We're, we're looking at just like three hundred thousand dollars. In roofing repair. And that's probably the first thing we've gotta do. So when you take the revenue from. Uh, the um, the weddings that we're having, primarily weddings. Um, it's, it's basically going into a fund to build up so we can do the roof. But we've got all kinds of other repairs that need to be done too. So, I mean, it, I think, you know, if you have an older structure or older house. How much it costs to maintain that structure, you know, and we're a nonprofit, you know, we, we're. You know, we, we're, we're basically trying to keep the school running on its own, separate over here. It has its own challenges financially. And then we've got the villa, which we're trying to maintain and it has its own challenges as well. So, the, you know. The history was that we used to have about fifty events a year. Um, you can go back and kind of look at the records. Sometimes the city would permit and sometimes not.
That's through the TUP process?
It was, yeah, it was through the T, the TUP. And then even prior to the TUP, there was a, another permit that the city gave us through the Community Services Department. So, the neighbors basically said, we've had it with these fifty events. And that's when we sat down with the neighbors and actually negotiated with them. To begin with a lower number. So the, the twenty-six has some history that goes back to like. The master plan in twenty seventeen, but it carried forward through the TUP process and. I guess you could bring Vincent back out of retirement. He could, he could answer the question.
Thank you, Mr. Farsing. Alright, I think we've had a good enough dialogue. I think I've got an idea of the direction of the commission and so I'm at. Not the commission, the council. Uh, I am at a point where I, I think I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Well, how are we gonna put, what are we gonna move?
Uh, I think that's kind of the gen- that, that's what we've gotta try to figure out. I, I think what I'm hearing is, is that we've got a motion to, to. To move it up to, to, from twenty to twenty-six. That's what I'm, I'm, I'm generally hearing from folks with a review um, in October.
Yes.
By the Planning Commission.
By the Clint Planning Commission, thank you.
So, City Attorney Gergosian.
Right, so I think if, if that is, if that's gonna be the motion, then the motion would be to amend section eleven to strike. The second sentence from the paragraph. And, and to amend section one point one of the temporary use conditions to increase it to twenty-six. If that's the motion you'd like to make.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Alright, so it carries four-one. Alright, great. Thank you all for that. Um, let us go ahead and move on to our second public hearing. Um, and that is from um, Finance Director Rainey. And gonna present uh, Resolution twenty-five twenty-two on the uh, updates to the twenty-four twenty-five fiscal ju- but. Fiscal budget and adjustments. Hanging in there?
Yeah, I might have to rush in real quick. I've already read the report.
Amendment checklist now, and we'll send it out to the team and say, please use this.
Director Rainey, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Uh, tonight I'm pla- presenting the mid-year budget adjustments for the fiscal year. Twenty-four twenty-five budget. Um, just a little caveat, uh, a funny thing happened on the way to the mid-year budget. We had a little bit of weather. Uh, well, before we had a little bit of weather, uh, we had a phenomenon called a fire. Called the Eaton Fire. Uh, I wanna go on record and basically. Uh, give my gratitude to two people on my staff. Uh, Selena Yang, my senior accountant. And Suttonum Wright, my finance and budget manager. Uh, we quickly came up with a fund. For the Eaton Fire and booked everything to it. Well, uh, that was a good thing. We had everything in one pot. The challenge was is, um, if these expenditures are not hitting. Uh, the city budgets in the general fund, then there could be a possibility that, hey, we've got more resources than. We have. And we could possibly overspend. So what we've been doing in the past few months is I've moved the money. Back from the Eaton Fire over back to the general fund. The reason being is that uh. It wouldn't, it would sh- the general fund would not show any type of overspending or deficits. And I would have this big hole in my Eaton Fire. And then you'd probably ask, you know, hey, how did this big gap happen? And we didn't know about it. So I, I purposely made the decision that we were going to wait until we moved it over. The second thing is uh, working uh, with Miguel and Joseph and the department heads with the Eaton Fire. I thought it would be more appropriate if we only came to you once regarding Eaton Fire expenditures. So uh. Uh, we moved to take care of this uh, in this agenda item. With that said, I'd like to go through the different parts. Of this. Uh, I basically am emulating the same process that was done last year. Uh, first at the tables. Uh, the first table is the general fund, mid-year budget adjustments. And on here, you'll see that these are the revenues. What I did in this table, however. Is the table, uh, you could tell I'm a spreadsheet geek, uh, because my uh, columns have letters on them. My rows have numbers. And what I did is I footnoted uh, what is in the row right below. For example, uh, we're anticipating an increase in franchise fees by eighty thousand dollars. And put on there the, the reasons why. Remittance from Southern California Edison and Southern California Gas. And we anticipate that to increase. Uh, sales taxes, um, those are lower. Uh, we work with a firm called Hindleider De Yamas and Associates, otherwise known as HDML. We utilize their projections. Uh, they're projecting it uh, to be low. Uh, the Cosmont presentation was very, very timely because we're seeing, uh, we're projecting. Lower than was forecasted sales tax revenues. One point five, if we could go to the next page. So the customers at home could see, okay. Uh, business license fees, that is lower. Primarily because uh, of a new implementation of a licensing, licensing system, Acela. And the Eaton Fire. And the fact that um, there were some uh. Uh, a s- the implementation of fee studies into this new system. And then going on a different uh, uh, timing of people paying for their licenses. Uh, we anticipate that there'd be a forty thousand dollar reduction from what we've projected for this year. Uh, one point eight licenses and permits. Um, really, really, really good. Um, hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, I gave you a breakdown below. We expect fifteen thousand dollars in electrical permits. Uh, eighteen thousand dollar increase over the forecasted mechanical permits and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in plan check. Fees. Uh, however, we have to remember that in order to do that, we contract that out. So we'll have a, I, I'm, we're minimizing our, our losses. Um, I've worked with the uh, planning and community uh, preservation folks. And they basically reminded me of that and showed me that uh, they will need to modify their budget in order to accommodate these expenditures. And then we have other ex- revenues, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, although I can't do it now. Uh, my plan is to eventually come back to the uh, city manager and to the council. And ask that we consider uh, hiring a firm to help us with our revenues. Uh, our revenue investments. Um, we have a lot of money uh, sitting there. Most of it is in. In uh, LEAF. But we believe that if we got some type of a manage, manager. Uh, to do that, that we could make more money on that. And you will see throughout this report. That there is uh, a lot of investment uh, revenue that we've uh, we were able to earn. Uh, this year. Uh, table two, general fund revenues. Here the, on the mid-year, uh, I'm sorry, general fund expenditures. Here is where I moved the monies from the Eaton Fire uh, predominantly into uh, the departments. And I go down yeah, uh, list by list. Administrative services, um. There's uh, increase to cover thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, there's uh, in one, two and one A. Two one B, increasing administrative services by twenty thousand dollars for a comp study. Um, twenty-one C is the legal fire expenses. Um, I, we've worked with the city attorney. In terms of segregating the costs so that we, when we go to, for reimbursements. Whether with the feds or with a private agency, um, we will have them all in, in one place. Um, two point four, fire services. The fire services uh, personnel-related costs. We're estimating to need another two hundred thousand dollars. Um, they were very, 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 very busy. Um, we believe that we need to move this in order to reflect it, to cover those. Uh, salaries and benefits. Uh, two, four B, five thousand for purchased firefighter boots for the Eaton Fire. Um, we have a very detailed list of what we bought for the Eaton Fire. Um, and then twenty-four thousand to initiate phase one of the city's hazarded min- hazard mitigation plan. We've been working with a consultant uh, on that. It's something that's a sta- that is a requirement. I believe the chief will, will back me on that. So this is something that we also need to accommodate. Um, two-five, the library, two thousand dollars for uh, the air purifiers, which was Eaton Fire-related. Uh, two point six, planning and preservation department. Uh, this is where the increase in the processing. Of those wonderful electrical permits and mechanical permits and plan check fees are going to be paid, paid for. Uh, the Weldon contract is, would be a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, which is broken down into. Uh, eighty thousand dollars to support the contract to provide professional consulting services for plan check reviews. And then an additional a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to expand to full-time building inspectors and commercial code compliance reviews. Also conducted by Weldon. Um, two-six C, uh, general plan update. Uh, this is to pay thirty-five thousand to cover the costs that were associated with the general plan update. And then of course, uh, two-six D were Eaton Fire expenses. Uh, supplies and detailed maps for the emergency operations center. Uh, Public Works was a large uh, user of uh, well, a large expenditures for the Eaton Fire. Hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for critical infrastructure support, including power for public utili-. Public facilities, fuel purchases, sandbags, numerous equipment and supplies. Um, and then finally, two point ten, uh, in conformance with Resolution twenty-four fifty-eight. That amended the fiscal year budget to move one point eight transfer from the general fund reserves. To the library targeted state grant for the library. What does that all mean in terms of expenditures? Um, I presented the uh, annual comprehensive financial report uh, to you. Uh, that was the, the audited financial statement. And on page twelve of that report. On table four A, it showed a general fund unassigned reserve balance. Of three million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand and a hundred and nineteen dollars. What does this have to do with the expenditures? What we're proposing is that after we do the adjustments, so that we, we're required to have twenty-five percent of our operational. Reserves from this undesigned balance, that we take two million three hundred and one thousand dollars um, from that. Uh, that is, if you go to, if you go back to table two. Um, that is your expenditures that we have for it minus the revenues. So there's two million five hundred twenty-four thousand dollars in expenditures. We subtract on the table one, the two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in revenue. And that leaves us with two million three hundred and one thousand dollars. We're requesting to use the reserve to cover that. Now, I got a question about, you know, well, uh, it was, you know, he gave us a figure of one point three million dollars overall. Well, that's in table eight. Table eight is everything together. I'll get to that, but to tell you that. Uh, the most important one that I look at all the time is the general fund. Moving along, if we go to uh, number three, the general fund balance changes. Um, so you will see in this table, in column C, that the net change to the fund balance would be two million, three hundred and one thousand dollars. It is well within, um, our, uh, res- reserve that we have. In fact, we, uh, we estimate we'll have at least, uh, one point five, one point four million dollars, uh, remaining. So it's not going to break the bank, but we just wanted it there as we work with these organizations called Cal O E S and FEMA, so that I can get all of our Eaton costs, uh, in the general ledger when they look at it. Okay, now we go to, to number four, table four. This is the water fund revenue and expenditures that we're proposing for the mid-year. Um, on here, there are revenue adjustments. Uh, we see a trend in charges for services up for about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in four one one. And then, of course, interest income. Again, we're, we're making money, uh, but we think we can make more. That, that's up by two hundred and fifty thousand. Both of them together come up to the six hundred thousand dollars that you see in four point one point five on the increase. Expenditure adjustments, we only had, uh, one, well, other expenditures, five thousand dollars for postage expenses, so we can bill, uh, our customers. And then eleven thousand dollars to cover the rising costs of third-party credit card processing fees. Um, I called them out by name. They're called Global Payments Integrated Open Edge. And wouldn't you know, all of a sudden, their charges went up. Uh, I called around and both commercial, nonprofit, and public sector folks are complaining about their fees going up. We're looking into that, uh, whether we should remain with them or go up. But it is an added, it is a cost that, that has increased. Um, in the grand scheme of things, it's not much, but I feel important that I disclose this.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you know if we cost recover that percentage in our fees?
No, no. It, it's one of these things, uh, uh, i- if you own a business, it would be like, I'm not gonna take credit cards. I'm not gonna take deb- debit cards. Why? Because there's an add-on fee that they put on there. So you don't, but guess what? People usually don't pay in cash, or they don't pay with checks. Uh, consider it a cost of doing business.
No Pasadena charges? So I was just curious if we did, 'cause I thought we discussed it, but I guess we didn't.
Not for, uh, utilities.
Mayor Protim, I do believe that we discussed it, and we may have discussed it during the, uh, the rate study. And it was determined at that point that we were not gonna pass that cost on to the resident.
While we're asking questions, can I just jump in?
As long as we're up to-
Do you prefer that, because, versus us asking at the very end?
Uh, uh, e- either way, it, it-
As long as we're up to table four, go for it.
Yeah, table four. Uh, so, um, as you recall, maybe you don't, maybe you weren't told, but we did give a little holiday on our, um, water fees. Um, is that, has that been contemplated? Is that part of the, the revenue adjustment? Or are we just looking purely at trends?
Because of the Eaton fire?
Yes.
Uh, that, that is part of that.
Okay.
That, that's even with that.
Even with-
Yeah, I, um-
Yeah.
My, my senior accountant and, and I talked-
Ammred that out too, okay. That's good to know.
With the, with the, uh, decrease in sales tax revenue that we see and some of the other things, can, can those be attributed to recovery? A decrease in business in the city?
I, I would need a nexus between how a, a fire, uh, contributed to that. I, I, I mean-
I know our attorneys talked about so many different formulas they use for recovery, so I was wondering.
But, but I, I could tell you from just talking to Cal O E S, they basically said, um, that would be, that would be a hard one. And we're only talking about, what, forty thousand? Not very much, um.
Well, we, I mean, half a second. The, the, the power shut out for a week down there. You couldn't, you couldn't do any business on, on, on Main Street.
I think what he means though is the recovery wouldn't be from O E S and FEMA, it would be from our lawsuit.
Yeah, oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes, from the lawsuit, yes.
If, if we're asking questions-
Please.
Sorry, I was holding mine to the end. Um, sorry to go back. Um, but on the business license fees, the, the forty thousand dollar downward adjustment, is that mostly just a timing? Because you're saying that part, part of it is based on the fact that people didn't renew in this fiscal period and, but are likely to renew, or some portion of them are likely to renew in a different period. So is, is that, is that some portion of that kind of a timing?
Claire, Claire, can you help me on this one? And it's the implementation of Acela, the new system. So it's a kind of a combination of, of all.
I guess, I'm, I guess, I'm, I mean, ultimately just asking, is, is some of that gonna essentially be recovered in the subsequent period when the, when the renewals kind of catch up, based on the delays?
Thank you for the question. So, um, the, this is license fee update was based on the fee study that was conducted, the user fee study. And it's based on how many, how, how many hour that staff was spending to, um, issue a business license. So by, by using that, so it significantly reduced the hour of staff time by using Acela, because they are entering, the applicants are entering the forms on their own. And the reason for the delay for the, um, business license registration was because of the fire and because all the events that were, weren't unable to do a lot of outreach. We were going to partner with Chamber of Commerce to do workshop and outreach to all the business owners and we were, weren't able to do that.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that, in part, some of it will be recovered because eventually folks will catch up and, and apply for their business license and will pay the fee. But what you're saying is there's also just a, across-the-board reduction in the fee because staff time has been reduced with this automation?
That's correct.
There's also, one other element I was gonna add was, this used to be a business license tax. And it was for a greater sum. But then when we converted it to a fee, because there was questions about the validity of that tax, that also reduced it, because then we were limited to cost recovery as opposed to cost-
Right, and the, and the cost that we're incurring is going down, which is a good thing. Um, but then it's also reduced, okay, but that, that's helpful.
And I'll tell you, as someone's gone through that process, it takes, the burden did go on to the applicant, uh, as far as time's concerned.
Isn't that significant, Mike?
It took me a while to get through-
Did it?
I don't know why. I was doing two things at once.
And then, and then my other question, sorry, totally unrelated, but, but previously, like, these, these estimates, these projections, you know, that you're using, um, from H, you know, H D L, they're, they're just projections, right? I mean, so they're, they're, they're adjusting their forecasts based on prevailing circumstances, right? With, they're not, it's not necessarily specific to Sierra Madre, like, they're just sort of looking at prevailing-
No, it, it is.
Okay.
H D L, a little, little story about H D L. H D L is a former, former city managers, former finance directors for former planning, former public sector employees, who formed, uh, consulting firm, got a contract with-
Director Rainey?
County-
So, so we got two, two more items on tonight, we've already bumped it, so I'm gonna try to move us tonight. So anecdotes, we're gonna cut those out tonight, sorry.
All right, they, they get the actual tax data from this county.
Oh, okay.
So that's why everyone uses H, H D L and firms like that.
But it's still just a projection for this next six months, right? So I mean, it's, it's, but, so it's based on what they think was going to happen, based on what's, what's, what's going on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, following on that, is your understanding, because we're, you know, we're seeing, and we saw high inflation, then inflation came down, we might see high inflation again. Was it your understanding that they had a higher inflation? It, was it an, a price of goods and services adjustment? Or was it the quantity of goods and services adjustment, or do you know?
Um, it appears to be the quantity.
So less, less, less actual spending?
Actual sales. And we get a breakdown by business type.
Okay, that's very interesting, thank you.
Okay.
And I had one more question, since we're on questions. Go for it. So, we're going to section three. If we're talking about the two million, three hundred, one thousand dollar transfer, um, out of the general fund, where does that leave us as a percentage? Um, because I know we, we're supposed to be twenty-five, informally, we want fifty. Um, if you know, where does that kind of, I think we were in the high sixties, as far as our general fund as a percentage of our expenditures.
The, are, are you asking for the reserve or the general?
The reserve.
The reserve, um-
Cause the, the request is to take it out of the reserve, right?
Right, I, 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 I don't know-
If you don't know-
I don't know that right now, um-
It's a guy, it's, yeah.
It's, uh, it's basically from the A C F R, we had three point eight million. Um, I'm proposing to take the two point three million from that, that would leave one point five million.
Of the increase.
Of, of the, of the reserve, out of the reserve. You have three point eight, which is twenty-five percent. And this would be two point three, which would leave one point five, and then I can get, get you the math.
So, so we don't get to the twenty-five percent, so we won't have a twenty-five percent?
We'd have less than twenty-five percent.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Table four?
All right, table, oh, table four, uh, that was the, the water revenue. And then I went over the expenditure-
Right.
Which is, uh-
Yep.
Four point three, forty-five. Number five is the sewer fund. Um, we predicted revenue, uh, charges for services, uh, five, five percent, five point one, three percent increase at sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen. Uh, and then, uh, interest income. We made some money with their money, seventy thousand dollars. So that makes up the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, that we have there on the increase in revenue. Uh, expenditures, uh, other expenditures, eleven thousand dollars again for the third-party credit, uh, card processing fee. And then other expenditures, like the fifty thousand dollars for the loader, uh, that also i- is coming, uh, from that. Uh, internal service, uh, revenue and expenditures. Um, I know a lot of people, when they look at this, they kind of scratch their head, how can this be? But yes, um, we put our money, uh, in things so that we get investments. So you can see that the revenue adjustments are attributable mainly to interest for idle cash, up to the tune of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, on there. And then the other, uh, so tho- those make up the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar. And then, uh, uh, so the adjustment on, on there. And then the expenditures, uh, eighty thousand dollars for personnel and risk management. Um, the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, C R A, is, uh, we're getting some, uh, higher-than-anticipated invoices that we must cover. So, uh, we're proposing to add eighty thousand dollars, uh, to cover that.
Just to, to clarify on, on the revenues for all of those different, uh, personnel categories. So we've got cash and we're able to put this in this account and be able to make interest on, on the money that we had. Um, and that, that's giving us the mid-year adjustment of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, is that right?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
That's the good part. The challenging part is, um, we're making a lot of money off of interest and not necessarily on other revenue increases. For example, um, one of the things why the last, that the projection that was provided last year is because a lot of the money was coming from the library money being in the, in there earning interest. And then when it's expended, it's gonna go down.
Yep.
Okay, number seven, uh, special revenue, uh, proposed mid-year. Uh, not very much, uh, on here, except in the, uh, library, uh, revenue adjustment for a library targeted state grant of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on the interest that we've earned on that. So we go to, uh, table eight. And this is an aggregation of everything together. While it may look impressive, one was, must remember that most of this is restricted. So even though a lot of folks may say, oh, you got, you know, you've got, uh, over, uh, forty million, thirty-two million, forty-two million dollars to spend, uh, yes, you do, but it's only the general fund that is discretionary and that, uh, you can, uh, make choices on. You can't use, uh, sale, y- you can use sales tax money for doing practically anything that you want for government. But you cannot use some of these other funds for that, particularly in the proprietary funds, which are run as a business, and in the, even the internal service funds. Those are kind of quasi-businesses. We charge back to other departments to pay for the services there. The money that we're not using, we put it in and we, we invest it. So all in all, the fiscal impact is about, for all funds, is one point three million overall, which, to be frank with you, is not much, uh, when you think about, when you think about it. Uh, it's very, very tight. I believe that the departments, and I can tell you from, uh, working with them with the Eaton fire, are very frugal. I think they make, they don't make good decisions, they make great decisions on how they're going to spend. Uh, I did not get Christmas lists of things for expenditures. Uh, they live with, within their, their limits. Uh, so all in all, what I'm asking to do is, uh, basically to accept these modifications that have been proposed. And the big one being the movement out of the, uh, reserve funds, uh, over to the general funds to cover that with the hope, knock on wood, that when we get to FEMA, we'll be able to do some recovery from that.
Director Rainey, um, in eight point, one point three, we've got, um, revenues of, uh, thirty-four point three million dollars. And in eight, three, three, we've got expenditures of forty-five point six million dollars. So, uh, approximately eleven million dollars in difference. And we're only looking at, at one point three million. So I'm having a hard time following when we're looking at the, uh, project ending dates on how-
Yes, what, what I don't show you on there is fund balance. It's kind of like an, an internal service funds.
Right.
Uh, I don't show you fund balance, because I'm, this is just a budgetary basis.
Okay.
So, uh, how, how, how is it that our expenditures are more than our revenues? Will I use fund balance? And it's the same with internal service funds, um, or some of the other funds that get grants. I'm spending my general, I'm spending my fund balance out of these funds to pay for it. And then on the reimbursement, it'll be made up. So this is not a, uh, if it was a report, what I would show you, beginning fund balance plus revenues minus expenditures equal-
Yeah.
It, it, it would be, it would be different.
And what's the special revenue fund?
The special, special revenue funds are mostly grants, uh, mostly money from the states and the counties.
Proposition funds and things like that.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
And the library.
And, yeah.
That's the main.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
So I, I just wanna kind of circle back to, to section three regarding the, the two, approximately two point three million dollar transfer out of reserves. So I pulled up the ACF, took a look, um, so twenty-five percent of operating expenses would be the three million, eight hundred, fifty-one thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. I think you referred, you referred to, is that right?
I'm, I'm sorry, come on-
So when you're going through section three, giving your, um, your presentation, you mentioned the twenty-five percent was about three point eight million, if I recall?
No, um, the three point eight million was the general fund reserve.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
In, in the, uh, as of July the first.
And your, your request is to pull two point three million out of that?
Two point three out of that, which would leave one point five, approximately one point five.
We're talking the same language, yeah, so. I just want, I think it's an important point, but I wanna make sure that the council kind of understands what's happening there. Cause that, to me, when you hear, oh, that's twenty-five percent, we're supposed to have twenty-five percent, we're reducing that, that, to me, that puts up caution, um, right? And I, I think I saw- Um, right, and I, I think I saw a couple of the council members bristle when I asked that question. But I, I do want to also say it's important, if we go back to the ACFR, that we had, also had ten million three hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars in unassigned, um, in our general fund. So, it's not, it's not earmarked as reserve, but it effectively is excess reserves, as far as I, as far as I look at it.
Yes, but I didn't want it to be.
I know.
Too, um, opti- well.
Well.
Uh, ba- basically, um, I, I, we have twenty-five percent in the reserve, so that's where I, I can only recommend that we use, that, that's what the policy.
We, we can't take that two point three out of the unassigned? And then keep our reserve at the twenty-five percent for, I mean, this, this, I, I know it's, money's fungible and it is what it is, but as far as if, like, a credit agency, anybody's gonna look at us. If we're, if we keep that reserved amount at twenty-five percent, but we can pull the two point three out of unassigned, is that something we could do, or you don't recommend it, or?
Um, I, well, that's the reason why you have a reserve, because what a credit agency would say, well, you're, you basically, but, w- we know what you're trying to do. But wha- what is the difference? You have your unassigned. The reserve is for those emergencies.
It's purpose, okay.
And they would probably, uh, challenge us on, did you, did your governing board know that the money that you, the twenty-five percent that you set aside, that you have to go to them for, that you're now telling them, oh, totally disregard that and go to the unassigned? Uh, usually when you see cities go to unassigned, it means they've burned up all of their reserves.
Okay.
And that they're really, uh, I won't mention any names, but some cities have done that. So I, I would recommend against that.
Thank you. No, I think this is an important point, and this is not something I've heard before from former finance directors, um, so, no, I appreciate it. Because we've always been talking about, yeah, the twenty-five percent, and then unassigned is extra reserves that we have. Um, so we're, we're in a really good place because we have all that extra.
Yes.
But I like the way you're looking at it and talking about it. Let's, we use a reserve for the purposes of what it's for. Um, and we can, hopefully with some, we can backfill it with some, you know, in future years and, and refill that twenty-five percent.
Yes.
So no, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. I, I've never had a finance director, I've only seen two other ones, but, um, d- describe it like that. It's, it's always been this rosy picture of we have, we're seventy-five percent, we're sixty-five percent, you know? And I'm not talking about the interim director, I'm talking about, um, permanent directors.
Well, I, it, and the reason why I bring it up is because, uh, one of the things that I did when I applied for this job is look at your financial policies. And I, I, I quote them, the folks, and they go, oh, where'd you get that? I go, your financial policy's on there. We, we've got, we've got some pretty robust financial policies. And I think whoever put them together did it to keep, this is why I think the city is as healthy as it is financially.
Thank you for that. Um, and then also going back, you, you mentioned, um, and it's probably not the question for today's purposes, but you mentioned in your presentation that you're looking at a potential manager of the, of our funds, uh, for interest purposes?
Yes.
Um, and, you know, we've been enjoying, on the short end of, you know, on the liquid portion of, of debt, uh, very high returns. And we have, we have to have liquid, liquidity here, right? So, we're talking about LEAF or short-term US Treasury bonds that have been laddered.
Or, or class.
So, thinking of that, I, I'm just curious, because I was on a board of a five oh one C three and, um, UPIA, the Uniform Prudent Investment Act, and UPMFA, Uniform Prudent Management of Institutional Funds Act, had to do a lot with five oh one C threes, but we had, we had those, those were in place because we were basically trustees of the funds, and I think the city and the council are trustees of the tax dollars, right? That's the kind of way I think of it. So are there similar type of acts that are, um, that cr- force us to have an investment policy and?
We do have an investment policy, and in fact, I will get you the update of the investment.
I haven't, I've never seen the.
Um, I, 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 I've talked, uh, the city treasurer, Sue Spears, and I have looked at this, and we basically.
At board, I was talking about it, Sue Spears was my secretary.
Yeah, and, and, and what, what our concern is, is not that, our concern is that we think we can do much better. But we also know that we don't have the horsepower to have someone sit during the day and try to figure out, well, you know, like, uh, when, uh, one of our, uh, one of our bonds matures, you know, okay, what do we do with the money? Oh, well, let's put it in LEAF. Well, okay, put it in LEAF, and LEAF is LEAF.
Well, LEAF is like four percent now, I, I don't sneeze at that, right?
Yeah, but, um, we, we're, we will probably come up after we share it with the, uh, city manager, a proposal to have a, I, and I really think that the city needs someone to.
And I know that's not the point of today, but I, you brought it up, and I, you know, to, to the mayor's point, and we've got a few more things on the agenda, but I, I just wanted to see.
My apologies.
No, 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 don't apologize. Um, but I would like to see the, um, the, uh.
Investment policy?
Investment policy, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions? All right, thank you for that detailed report.
Yes.
Um, so now we'll open up to, to public comment. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any, uh, cards for public comment?
We do. We have one speaker card submitted. Is he still here?
Yes.
Glenn Lambden. Oh, then we don't.
All right, um, so this is a dis- just a discussion item, so we do not have, um.
This is a public hearing.
This is a public resolution.
Just pu- oh, I'm sorry, I wa- I would have my agenda already going on to the public items. Thank you all for correcting me. So, yes, we do have to adopt this. Gosh, that, uh, yes, so, um, we go ahead, um, any other discussion on this item? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution twenty-five twenty-two.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we're on to discussion items. I was moving too fast. Okay, um, Mr. McGee, you're up with, um, the sidewalk repair program.
Mayor, Public Works Director Yunus is gonna step in.
That is fine. Director Yunus.
Again, good evening, uh, Mayor, members of City Council. I am stepping in today for, for staff. And we'll be discussing with you today the continuation of the sidewalk repair program, implementation of Zones one and three for the fiscal year of twenty-four, uh, twenty-five. Uh, it is recommended that staff recommends to the City Council that we receive and file this report. Staff will initiate the implementation of the sidewalk repair program in Zones one and three for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. Under the city's existing four-year contract with precision, precision concrete cutting. Uh, this will allow Public Works to proceed with, uh, repairing identified sidewalk hazards in these zones using the cost-efficient sawcut method. And that, uh, for those who do not familiar with sawcut method, that is the use of specialized equipment such as a diamond blade, which when used in concrete, it does create, uh, more of a flushed joint, uh, thus avoiding, uh, breakage, uh, allowing concrete pressure to, to, uh, sit well, especially on a new slab. And this will, uh, proceed repairing identified sidewalk hazards in zones using, uh, of course, in accordance with the twenty-two citywide sidewalk assessment and council-approved program. This, uh, clearly falls under the str- strategic plan correlation. Uh, this program will support the following City Council's strategic plan goes of maintain and improve public infrastructure, improve pedestrian safety and accessibility, along with proactively reduce city liability through prevented, uh, preventive maintenance. Uh, this concludes my presentation. At this time, it will address any questions that you may have.
Questions from the council?
So, so this is a continuation of the five-year sidewalk plan? Uh, cause I, I recall when Director Sumino presented it to us, it was a five-year plan, but it had four zones within it. And one of the years was going to be kind of a reassessment year. Um, so is this the continuation of that?
That is correct, Councilmember.
And the majority of the funding, again, i- is from Measure M and Measure R? Can you, maybe you don't know, maybe that's a.
Well, a- a- also along with Measure C too, so.
Could you explain what those measures are and where those funds, uh, come from?
I.
If you know.
At this time, it, it, it eludes my memory, but.
No, it's okay. I know this isn't a pop quiz.
I'll be happy to, uh, uh, bring that back to your attention.
But most of this is funding for this, this specific purpose?
Specifically for this purpose, yes, sir.
Okay. And do you know if those fu- the funds can use, be used for other purposes?
Um, I have inquired into it, as long as it's, uh, preventive measures, uh, curb and gutter.
Okay. And the, from the pictures, it seems as though the, the cutting is much better than grinding.
Oh, definitely, sir, yeah.
Because it, it protects our infrastructure more in the long term, is that right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
That's all, yeah. Great. Other questions?
I just have a question procedurally, because the staff report mentions that this is receive and file, but then there are actual recommended actions. So I wasn't quite sure what we're supposed to do with this.
There may have been some, uh, miss.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. We just need a direction as to whether this is actually receive and file, or we need to actually approve. The sack, recommendation is to approve the recommended action, so I, I.
Councilmember Greaves, I, I think when staff created the staff report, um, maybe there was a misunderstanding, um, and this is a receive and file.
Okay.
Council has already approved this, this project. Um, m- our goal was to inform the community that we're starting, uh, the next phase and let, uh, basically let the community know that we're starting the next phase.
Can I ask you a question about the phases, cause I wasn't here? When, um, we went to the next phases, was this all assessed five years ago, and now we're reaching that part? What other, are there times that, that another, mm, unplanned repair has to be done, and how do we accommodate for that?
That is accommodated internally. Uh, there have been a, a number of, of unexpected unplanned, uh, maintenance, uh, routine maintenance throughout town. Uh, that'll be done internally with, uh, uh, already allocated funds in our budget.
And for these two phases, Zones one and three, do we see a dramatic change from what we anticipated? I mean, have we done any, like, kind of a current assessment?
Uh, good, great question. If, uh, I don't recall if you were a, a member of the council, uh, uh, Mayor Protan, but if you recall, the water line replacement on Sturdivant, um, that also included, uh, sidewalk repairs. So we took advantage of, of that project to kill two birds with one stone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, there are sixty-nine spots within the city that have lifts of above two and a half inches. What are the plans for those?
Those will be immediate, uh, immediately, uh, attended to. Um, these are high flag, uh, areas that we are concerned with. Uh, they will be addressed, uh, properly, and these are on, on the top of the list, uh, for precision cutting. So once, one, once they are, are cut and, and flushed, then we will address, I would like to address all the areas that are above, uh, two inches or higher. We do have some areas, there are three, three and a half, even four inches. This is by, uh, du- due to root damage, et cetera.
And those can't be covered by this. If you're above, the way I read this report, is if you're above two and a half, you, you can't use this cut method that we've got, that you have to replace, you have to pull out the, the sidewalk and, and replace it. Is that the case for those sixty-nine locations? We have to pull out, uh, sidewalk and replace it?
That is correct, sir.
And is that part of this project?
That'll be part of the project too, and part of internal, uh, process too.
So, so you'll be able to replace all of the, the, um, all of the, the places that have been identified in this, including the sixty-nine that are above two and a half?
That is the goal, sir. Uh, we do plan to carry into the twenty-two fi- twenty-twenty-six, uh, year too.
Okay. Other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
Yes, from, uh, Glenn Lambden.
From Mayor Lambden.
Honorable Mayor, Madam Mayor Protan, Council and Staff, uh, just a quick point of correction, this is a four-year plan. Years one through three were to receive the work. The fourth year was to have an evaluation, um, an assessment of the city sidewalks again. Um, when I was here, a council meeting ago, I expressed my concern, um, about the deteriorating infrastructure, our sidewalks, streets and water infrastructure. Um, so when I read this, I was a little, uh, this report, I was a little taken back to see that Zones two and four have been completed. According to this report, um, it, it claims that Zones two and four have received maximum efficiency, that, um, all parts of the city, uh, that needed repair will have been repaired in those two zones, uh, that it's received comprehensive safety and so forth. This really isn't true, and it's, it's, uh, inaccurate that two and four are at that level, uh, of repair. What, what I'd like to do is invite all of you, council and staff, meet me tomorrow morning, seven-thirty, the corner of Victoria Lane and, and Baldwin. Give me ten minutes, and let's walk up to Grandview. That's in Zone, it was actually, uh, taken into account for Zones two and four. And look at the condition of that. If, if that's what we can expect to be the finished product, then this program is failing us. We can walk across the street and look, uh, the entrance to the church, it's one of the most dangerous places, but this was supposed to have been taken care of. So, seven-thirty tomorrow morning, I'd, I'd love to see you guys there, because what we're doing isn't working. And I have another minute, I'll give you a quick story. April nineteen ninety-eight, the new council, their very first meeting, went into closed session and handed a resident a check for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, cause it was a trip and fall. That was nineteen ninety-eight money, so you can imagine what it would be today. And the condition of our sidewalks are way worse, and they're not getting better, and this program really isn't fixing the sidewalks. Take a walk on Sierra Madre Boulevard, uh, on the north side between Mountain Trail and Baldwin. That also was, uh, included in what was supposed to be fixed. It's hazarded all over the place. Go on East Island. Um, the, a- again, this program isn't working, and something different has to be done. So, hope to see you at seven-thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Lambden. Other discussion on this?
Well, it's part of my questions was, what do we do when this program, we, you know, it's been that many years, are we assessing how successful it is?
My.
Problems that come up after, are, are we seeing that many repairs?
My recollection, it was, I know the public comments said it was a four-year program. My recollection, it was a five-year program with one year of assessment. But, and that assessment, I thought, was for this, this type of purpose. That was my memory.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess the question would be, there's many, the Zone, Zone one was done in the first year of the program, which would have been three years ago. And so the question is, is it a problem of additional damage since then, in the, in, in the prevailing three years? Or did the repairs not work or hold, right?
I think the shoe started, right?
I think I can maybe answer both your questions with the way San Dimas manages. And, and, um, I know my sidewalk was, was, they ground it about four years ago. And we have trees in the parkway, and, um, it doesn't take a lot of time, the streets will become, the sidewalk will become uneven again. And last month, they re-ground my sidewalks. So, um, it is a process that contin- that requires continuous maintenance, and it is a four, typically a four-year cycle. That's what I see in San Dimas, and that's what we have here. Um, and if we, if we lay off the program and extend it beyond the last four years, then the problems can continue to get worse. But part of the evaluation process, when we're done with this contract, will be to see if, if four years makes sense, or do we need to go to a three-year, uh, uh, cycle, uh, do the city a little bit sooner. Um, and I, I think it also has to do with the amount of rainfall we get. Um, that's something that maybe Senior Management Analyst, uh, Carlson, can incorporate, uh, to determine how drought affects, uh, how trees grow. And in years where we have heavy rain, does that increase the uplift because the trees are growing? Uh, so there's a lot to consider, um, and I think in that, in that assessment year is when we'll do all that is, that consideration.
On that note, though, have, have, has Public Works concluded that this isn't an issue with the work being done under the contract? Because, you know, part of, obviously, implementing the contract is making sure that the work that's being done is actually, you know, we're getting what we paid for, right? And so I guess, i- it sounds like from your answer that the conclusion is that this is continuing damage after. continuing damage after it's been fixed versus the fix not being uh not working.
Right. I I think um, I think we can say with 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 great confidence that the contractor that we have is doing an exceptional job um in in saw cutting the sidewalks. Um, there are areas that are that are two and a half inches or greater that require us to remove and replace the sidewalk. I don't know where we're at in that process. Um, that's handled separately. Um, some of it is handled under the contract in spot spot cases. Uh, but the majority of this work is just for saw cutting. Um, and it needs to be a g- uh a process that gets repeated um in order to be able to maintain that, to keep those sidewalks below the two and a half inches.
And we and we do all this work on the city. I mean, I I lived in Pasadena and when I sold my house in Pasadena, I got a bill from the city to repair my sidewalks, even though it was Parkway City Trees. And I had to pay that bill before they would clear my uh my sale. Um, I assume that that's not, you know, we we actually put this bill in in the city, in Sierra Madre, the city puts this bill and we don't push any of this off onto um private homeowners. Again, I'm not, I'm not, not as a policy matter, just as a question.
Can I, can I address, because I was on council and we addressed that question. And as I recall, we left an option for homeowners to 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 take care of the sidewalks in front of their house if they wanted to. Is that, isn't that right?
We've had several programs. We'd have, we'd had, we had a program where the residents would pay for the material and the city would give them labor. Uh, we also have um public improvement projects if somebody has uh does a renovation to their property. And I believe it's based on square footage. Um, maybe senior management analyst Carlson can expand.
Um, yes, particularly on that question. You may recall the conversation we had about the special ordinance for the rebuilding and that um while we weren't including it specifically i- in the ordinance and we're not codifying the ordinance, but uh we regularly will consider requiring a development project to redo curb, gutter, sidewalk or other driveway improvements where they're needed and if the the size of the development and the work of the development um calls out for it. With with the particular ordinance, we decided, you know, we want to really make sure that we we um don't enforce that or don't request that unless it's absolutely ne- necessary. In fact, I alluded to the point that there, none of the burnt structures are next to any sidewalks. And so that was included as part of that ordinance. Um, a standard development, it could be a condition of approval from the Public Works Department to conduct uh public right-of-way improvements upon completion of their project.
But uh, Councilmember Greaves, to answer your question, we do not put that burden on on the residents.
I do thought, I did think we had the option. I I believe we do.
I I I believe.
I wanted to fix the sidewalk in front of my house because I have the uneven one. It keeps getting ground. It's okay, but I'd rather not look at the ground. I'd rather put in a stretch of sidewalk. I don't mind paying for it.
Yeah, any any resident can make those improvements with a simple excavation permit.
Okay.
It's it's actually not as rare as people might think.
That's my understanding.
And it happens with their own driveway approaches as well as sidewalks. Not so much curbs that we're seeing, but you're right. A lot of people will go ahead and pay for that sidewalk improvement and we make it as easy as we can for them.
The the program that we no longer administer is the the shared program where we we supply the labor and they they pay for the materials.
So if we could um have staff get some of those locations that Mr. Lambden had uh had pointed out, Victoria Lane and I think there was at least one other, let's make sure that those are aren't uh significant trephazards. And uh as we're part of doing this, this, this round of it, and if it doesn't fit into in this one, let's make sure we prioritize it in the next.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else?
I just wanted, are we in question or comment right now?
We are in discussion.
Okay, yeah, okay. Um, this has been a pet peeve of mine for a long time. I feel like we've made a lot of progress since I came on the council in twenty fourteen, a lot of progress. And I can, I can think of various sidewalks that have been fixed and replaced. We have an old infrastructure and we haven't had the money to do this. We're, we just started spending serious money just a few years ago on our water mains. So um, you know, it's a, it's frustrating. I think the plan we have now with the sawing, precision sawing, I think is, from a li- legal liability point of view, is the minimum we should be doing right now. But we should have discussions, uh, when we're talking about revenue enhancements. We should have discussions about how we could raise some more revenue for these kinds of projects. Uh, I'll tell you, it makes it, it's a game changer. Right in front of uh, right across from Memorial Park off Hermosa, four years, there was a sidewalk like that. And I I was on my walk here and I would skip over it and skip over. We just had the sidewalk guys come in and they were putting in the new uh disability-friendly corners. And in the, and it was close to that, so they went ahead and completely replaced that sidewalk. And it made it into a, it just made it a complete difference in how it looked and how it performed. Near kind of a tricky intersection. Guys used to have to, some people would literally walk off the sidewalk and go around it. It was so bad. So this is no small matter. I mean, this is something that, you know, we have all these things, all these, you know, chainsaws we're juggling and running city government. This is just, you know, another one, you know, that costs a lot of money.
And it, you're to the point of what monies we can use. If we have monies from Measure M, Measure R.
R and C.
Yes. Then can't we use those funds?
We are.
I know, but I'm saying can we, for all these other extra things that we're thinking that we might not have the money, I don't know the budget that, we don't know.
If we have extra Measure M.
That's why I'm asking. That's what, that's what, that's what the original question was, is how's the funding?
These are all great, great comments and great observations uh to Councilmember Goss's point. Uh, with precision con- uh cutting, we we are definitely uh, there's a sign of relief when it comes to the liability part. Uh, this is a concrete uh scenario here. Uh, we'd like to let this council know that when we have an emergency situation, uh, we will step in and make a temporary repair with asphalt. Just like, just like the the area you were talking about earlier, sir. We will not wait until precision cu- uh precision comes around and and, you know, takes care of it. We are on top of that. Uh, we do have a very beautiful living organism here, which are our beautiful trees in town. And and those suckers, damn, they do some serious damage. Uh, so with that said, there are situations and sometimes uh management analysts, Carlson, and I, we'll ha- we'll have discussion as to do we remove the tree or not? I mean, this, here's a beautiful tree and here's a broken sidewalk. It, we're stuck literally between a tree and a concrete. So we have to make those decisions. We want to save the trees, but at the same time, we want our sidewalks to be uh safe for everyone.
And equitable for everybody.
Correct.
ADA and.
Exactly.
All right. Is there any other discussion on this? All right, this is a receive and file. I think I've got it right now, so we can go on and hit our last agenda item.
Thank you.
Management Analyst Carlson, you are up.
Uh, wonderful. Thank you um and good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we're not going to go through every page tonight.
Oh, man.
Ultimately, we are recommending as staff that you uh review the updated strategic plan and provide us with any changes in either the organization or the substance of the plan. And hopefully, you may have noticed, there were some considerable changes to the plan since you last saw it. Um, and a lot of that is to the enhancements and detail and and really thorough upgrade by Director Rainey. I want to make sure that's pointed out, that he put a lot of effort into that. We hope that you find it to be an upgrade. Um, I'm here to answer any specific questions on any of the items in the uh updated strategic plan. We also are bringing this to you because there has been three months of significant changes to the city that you may want to think should be inserted into a strategic plan. You also may have noticed that some of the items here, I was able to to make them green and even indicate that these items have been completed. So when we're talking about the organization of a of the strategic plan going forward, how long do they hang into the strategic plan? Are we at a, at a moment considering the last three months and the evolution of what we've been working on um to maybe go out and do another workshop? Should that workshop include a public opportunity for input? These are the um, these are the items that we're really looking to get from the city council at this point. And again, we're just asking for um feedback at this time. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Management Analyst Carlson. Um, questions?
I just have a question about the the town hall. There is an actual town hall that we'd like to include this in the agenda or is the idea that we would schedule a town hall to discuss this as the agenda?
That, that's a, that's a great question. And um, uh, when City Manager Reynoso and I were talking, we were looking at the after-action from the last three months, from the emergencies, where we're going to the public and we're letting them give us some feedback. Perhaps that's an opportunity for the strategic plan. Or if the council would rather, maybe we do a standalone, um, or we work it in some, in some other way. It's entirely up to you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Um, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Great. So we'll close with public comments and bring it back for discussion. Any comments or discussion on this item?
Just in terms of the interaction, the question and answer just just now. I mean, my, my personal view is that we have an after-action report, interaction with the, with the public in a town hall setting or whatever the setting is and and leave it to that. I sort of feel like that's a significant or, you know, a, a, you know, significant enough item and and probably will require, you know, folks in the public to spend some time prepa- you know, preparing for that. And I'd like them to like spend the time to do that, you know, kind of on a standalone basis so that we get, you know, a depth and and breadth of of response on that. And and I would, I would keep this separate, even though I know they're, they're not unrelated. But I do think that I would, I personally would prefer that be specific to the incident. And then we, you know, I mean, then we could maybe even incorporate some of that, you know, where necess- where relevant into the update. But I I would, if we were going to have a discussion of this, I would have that be separate from the after-action report, community involvement.
And and when we did have this, um, we had a number of workshops related to it. I I I don't think, my personal feeling feeling on them is that they weren't all that effective. I think, you know, a lot of this stuff is is pretty down in the weeds on things. I mean, you can see the amount of attention that staff has on putting this in. Um, and I I I'll draw a little bit on what you were saying is is that when we hear things, when we get feedback from the public, when we get, you know, thoughts on what the 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 city should do, I think this is a great place to put it into. I I just, you know, unless we've, we we look at another way of doing a strategic plan with public input, I'm, you know, I I I'm not sure that that's the best use of the public's time. I, I think the public will give us direction that they can go into the report, but I I I don't know that a workshop seemed to make a lot of sense.
I mean, I guess I would just make one delineation there, is that when we did those workshops previously, I think it was without the actual report, right? It was just sort of theoretical.
Fair enough.
It was like talking about themes, thematic things. I think if we were to consider, you know, having something to react to, I think improves the quality of the feedback because now they they've, you know, to the extent that they read it, um, you know, they 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 may have specific thoughts versus before, I think we were having much more generalized.
Yeah, what should we put in it? Okay.
And maybe, maybe the forum wouldn't necessarily be a town hall forum-type workshop, but maybe instead surveys to survey what is important at this time, you know, following through with the fire, looking at our revenues, looking at what are people willing to pay for? What what is a priority for you in our city? We we hear from a certain constituency. We don't hear from the general public. And from what I've heard from other cities, they do it, you know, every few years, especially if they've done a lot of action and a lot of new implementation of new systems. So I think those types of surveys are really valuable.
Okay.
If we can actually reach everybody, if we can figure that part out.
Or get a response.
Or get a response.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, exactly, yeah.
Get it to them, like we were talking about in our downtown um with Cosmont. How do we reach people? How do we reach all of our constituents? And that's been the question forever. So if we can feed it out.
Communication, yeah, exactly. Makes sense.
Well, I'm cynical, even if I feel like even if we reached everyone, our, the response rate would not be high.
That's the track record.
That's just the cynic in me.
Well, notwithstanding the 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 public comment, which I think is is a very important thing, you know, I I went through this i- in some detail and I think it's just an incredible plan. And I want to really thank um everyone's uh contributions to it. I want to thank Management Analyst Carlson for wrangling folks and putting it together. I I'm really um really impressed with it. I I love the idea that we have lots of things that are are completed uh and things to point to. I I, you know, I'm going to call one of them in particular out, the evaluation implementation of a part-time EOC coordinator position. You know, that was one of the things that was in the strategic plan. We made that happen. And that EOC position and all of the training that went on saved homes, saved lives during the the Eaton Fire. And so I think it, to me, it's like, you know, it it's, having this plan helps us identify where where we need to be moving and, yeah, we're seeing some positive uh things to come out of it. So, you know, really, thank you everyone for that. Um, the one thing I I, there's two, two asks I have on it. Um, one of them is is that with every item on there, um, I really want to see some sort of target date associated with it. Is, you know, it doesn't have to be specific, but if we're going to have a go- a a a project item on there, we should have some sort of date. Dates can move. We saw a lot of them move. I'm completely fine with that. I I want to see the dates. Um, the other thing that I'd love to see is, I'd love to see like a matrix upfront. I'd love to see a way that we can look at all of the items, have some sort of quick summary, so you can scan down it and see, one, the progress of where we are on it and what all the items are. And I think that'll help all of us, it'll at least help me, so I'll be selfish in this, tie items that we have in the agenda to the strategic plan. So we can look at, you know, we can have have a a one or two-page, maybe it's a three-page thing, has all of the 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 things on it, all of the projects we're working on. And we can look at a staff report and go, yep, I'm seeing how how our strategic plan is meeting that so that, you know, we're seeing the relevance of this plan in helping to to direct activities within the city.
And I think to address um Senior Manag- Man- Management Analyst Carlson's question, I mean, in terms of how long things kind of remain as as complete, I mean, I think, you know, I think like one round and the next time you updated things that are done, maybe they get moved to an appendix so that we can see what what's been done, but we don't have to like, you know, we don't have to muddy the the
Organize.
Going, good the go-forward, but I, you know, I like to see in, you know, in this rev, you know, what's been completed. And then, you know, we don't need to see it again because we already know it's been completed. So I, that's, that would be my suggestion in terms of organization.
I love the idea of the appendix. That's great.
I think that would just be like a cut and paste.
All right. Any other discussion on this item?
I would just echo. I mean, this is a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's really, really impressive.
Amazing.
Both, I mean, both in terms of, and you know, I mean, you know, me, I love the presentation too. I mean, it's it's clear, it's, you know, it's it's organized. It's, it's really impressive.
Excellent. There's some discussion going on over there. Gentlemen, is there something you want to? We 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 could give you a moment. That's not a problem.
No, uh, it's something further to discuss with the city manager.
No worries.
No referral action.
All right. Um, so this is um again, an informational item, so we do not need to have a a motion on it. So that takes us to the final item on the agenda. I I I just want to say thank you to everyone to getting us here. I was worried we'd hit the ten o'clock uh, but we haven't. We're, we've come in before ten. Um, so any future items for for agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting until uh Earth, is it Earth Day is April twenty-second or twenty-first? I never remember.
Twenty-second. My daughter's birthday.
So so I I will, uh, all right, and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are out. Thank you all. We are out. Thank you all.